... One Nation, One Your God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, welcome. Adoption of Agenda for the Director of Meeting. Under provisions of the Public Meeting Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the date, time, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of this notice and the agenda for the meeting was posted on Monday, February 10th, 2014, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Forest of Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Mr. Shabow, any motion?
Second.
They're moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Ebert. Mr. Shabow, which call or roll?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye.
Mr. Gutiérrez, Mr. Ortiz, and Mr. Morris?
Aye. We don't have anything for closed meeting this evening. I'd like to motion to table this.
I move to table.
They're moved by Mrs. Hogshead and seconded by Mr. Brown. If we table, do you close the meeting? You ready for order?
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye.
I would aye. Mr. Martínez?
Aye.
And Mr. Morris?
Aye. Time for recognition. They had a lot of them tonight, so...
All right. Item number four, McClure High School Junior Receives KMOX Southeast Missouri State University Student of Achievement Award. Ashley Kelly's junior.
McClure High School Junior Evelyn Kumay received a KMOX Southeast Missouri State University Student of Achievement Award for outstanding achievement in academics, athletics, the arts, community service, and leadership. Miss Kumay will receive a renewable $3,000 per year scholarship for the university in addition to recognition on KMOX radio. Evelyn and her family could not be here tonight, so I'm honored to accept the award on her behalf.
And item number five, Wedgewood Elementary School Named Healthy U.S. Schools Challenge Silver Award winner.
Wedgewood Elementary School has been named a Healthy U.S. Schools Challenge Silver Award winner by the United States Department of Agriculture, one of only 29 silver award-winning schools in the state of Missouri. Wedgewood is the first Ferguson-Floreson school to apply for and receive the honor given to the school based on nutrition guidelines of school meals, physical activities in the school, and nutrition and wellness education for the students and staff. Silver level schools receive their plaque, $1,000 in award money, and can claim the distinction for four years before reapplying or reapplying yearly to achieve gold or gold with distinction level. There's currently only one gold in the state. Congratulations.
And item number six, Good Samaritan Marvin Witherspoon, Healthy Student Injured in Car Accident.
Mr. Marvin Witherspoon II, son of Principal Robin Witherspoon, is being recognized by the Board as a good Samaritan. On November the 20th, two students from Johnson-Walbach Elementary School crossed January Avenue in Ferguson and were hit by a car. One of the students, sixth grader Lawrence Kraut, was pinned underneath the vehicle. Mr. Witherspoon witnessed the accident and immediately sprung into action, working with other citizens, Mr. Sean Smith, to use car jacks to lift the car off the student. Both children were taken to St. Louis Children's Hospital where they were treated and released. We want to thank Mr. Witherspoon for his quick action and heroic efforts to help Lawrence and his younger brother Nigel. Please join me in thanking him.
Lawrence, would you like to say something?
I just wanted to say that I'm doing real better now after the accident.
Item number seven, five from Ferguson-Floreson School District, winning 2013 NCCU, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Oratory Contest.
Four students and one staff member, if you're present, along with Mr. Hopper and Dr. Mortopoulos, would you please come forward? And our parents, thank you for coming forward. Ms. Kelly and Miller, thank you. Four students and one staff member from Ferguson-Floreson School District were named winners of the 2013 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Oratory Contest, sponsored by the North County Churches United for Racial Harmony and Justice. Justice Woodcock of Ferguson Middle School won in the grades six through eight category. And Nikitra Purlet, Christopher Hearn, and Desiree Dominions of McClure North High School won in grades nine through twelve category. Mr. Ernest Wills, an FS, a Ferguson-Floreson School District member, and works at Mark Twain Student Support Center, won in the adult category. Each presented their or-- I'm sorry. Each presented their oratories at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at St. Louis Community College at Ferguson Valley on January the 19th and received a $100 check. I will say, everyone did an outstanding job. Our students and our adult member participated in the event and performed outstanding, outstanding. And thank you for joining us, Dr. Thomas. It was a great event, high comments from everyone that attended, and I would just like to say, if you were not in present there, you missed a treat. It was awesome. Thank you so much for your participation in the contest. As they're getting us a tip, is Dr. Thomas, would you like to speak? The President of the NCCU.
Thank you, Dr. Digg. I'm very proud of the winners of our NCCU Contest 2013. Wonderful event at the college on January the 19th. And those who came in first and second, third, and fourth made their presentation before a group of about 250 people. Wonderful event, and of course, we're still hearing a lot of favorable comments about the way in which they presented their essays. They did a wonderful job. You're always very proud of all of us. They did an outstanding job at the college. Thank you very much.
Item number eight, the Board would like to recognize folks with First Baptist Church of Ferguson. Any representatives? Mr. Wagner, is he here? When frigid temperatures caused Sprinkler Head to burst at Johnson-Walbach Elementary School on January 7th, resulting in extensive water damage to the school, Ferguson-Floreson School District Maintenance and Administrative Teams sprang into action to assess the situation and find a way to continue classes despite damage to two-thirds of the facility. Thanks to the generosity, flexibility, and neighborly spirit of the First Baptist Church of Ferguson, we were able to temporarily and quickly relocate all of JW's 426 students and 60 teachers to the church's education building, and were ready to hold classes again by the time school resumed in the district on Monday, January 13th. As a board, we wish to express our deepest gratitude for the help that was extended to the district during this time. Thank you so much.
We want to make a special presentation. Boys and girls at Griffithville X-School-- were really peaceful. It was something about the church that really caused us to be very peaceful in our daily quest for education.
And we'd like to announce now, we're moving in permanently.
Permanently. But I just want to tell you that this was truly a mission. It was truly evidence of your mission for the community, and that your entire church family rallied around us to give us the space, the love, the support, and the encouragement. And the people working daily to keep the grounds ready for our boys and girls spent outstanding. And we're teaching our boys and girls at Johnson-Walbach that we are a school of peace, we are a school of love, and that we want to give back as well. So the boys and girls today brought in change to honor your children's ministry, and we're presenting $265. And all of these are thank you notes. Please read them and share them with your congregation. It was an outstanding blessing. And my JW teachers, would you please stand? We have just been so blessed by.
Well, we want to-- I love it, that whole TV program, The Eighteen, and the star would always say, "I love it when a plan comes together." This is a great plan, and it just shows what community and church can be about. And you guys, too. And Robin, she's a trooper. God bless. Board update. This portion of the meeting is allocated to the Board to provide an update of current activities, events in the district that may be of special interest to the Board members and the community. Mr. Ebert?
There, I am working. I had a battery up here, so I was kind of wondering about that. I'd like to see everybody out here. Kind of hoping for warmer weather, I guess everybody is. I know it snowed an awful lot, and you know it snows a lot when your kids are like, "Oh, no, not another snow day," because they know they're going to make it up. So that was really something. I've been working around the district. We're in negotiations now with the FFNAA, and it is going really well. So that's really all I have at this time.
Brown?
Maybe it's my bad. Can you hear me anywhere? There you go. All right. As Mr. Ebert said, there have been a lot of meetings, and the negotiation meetings, and he and I have been attending them. Terrific group of people working together, solving issues, and it's a pleasure to watch them. Also been involved in some finance meetings, learning a little bit more about our people and how well they are looking into economizing, saving money, making proper purchases and things like that. It's been a great pleasure being around these professionals as they do their jobs, and I'm just very fortunate to be able to experience them.
Schrader?
Is this working?
Maybe not.
It is, okay. I attended both the Professional Development Committee meeting and the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting. Both of those centered around the changes we're having to make for the new round of testing that comes a year from April. One of the new initiatives is the new writing program, because our students have to make the transition from working in English Language Arts mostly with fiction, and with the new test, we're going to have to be working mostly with nonfiction. And so that's a big change for the teachers, it's a big change for the students, and everyone is really ahead of the game for our work and what I see in getting ready for these changes we have to face next year.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Well, first I would like to just say Happy New Year, since we weren't here in January, and wish you all a very prosperous 19-- or 19-- yeah, here we are, in 2014. I would also like to piggyback on what Mr. Brown said. Our negotiation, pre-negotiation meeting and finance meeting was just outstanding. I would-- I really take my hat off to Mr. LaRue and the entire cabinet. There were some very innovative things brought to us, and very hard decisions, and some tough suggestions, and I just really appreciated that meeting and appreciated all the work that all of you did. So, thank you.
Mr. Shabow?
It's been pretty quiet for me. I haven't had any committee assignments or meetings to go to. I am scheduled to go on Tuesday to Jefferson City for the legislative day. I'm not sure who else is going to be attending with me, but I am glad I'm going. I want to just send a personal thank you out to the entire staff of the district, the way they handled the move over to the First Baptist Church, but also the multiple snow days that we've had. And I'm really happy to announce that winter is now over, and we will no longer have any more snow days.
Thank you, Pucks, Tony Phil. I just want to sort of reiterate what a couple of these guys said in maybe just a few different words, that the staff has been going through some tremendous effort to understand and communicate to us, as well as others, the financial situation of the district, and all of this will be talked about at greater length in the minutes, hours, days, weeks, and months to come, but the level of dedication and creativity was inspiring, and frankly, my three years here, I have not seen from each and every one of you, and as a whole, this particular level of teamwork. It has been really inspiring, and I can't imagine asking for anything more out of them. So it's been, it's been great, and I just want to thank them as well. I don't have to thank them.
Mr. Shabow, you can tell us election year. He's promising things, huh? Speaking of election year, it is, it is our election year. Mr. Shabow and I are both up for election this year, and we have a total of eight candidates running this year, including us two. So if any of those other candidates are here tonight, would you please stand up? Is that Dr. Thurman? There she is, there she is, okay. Mr. Sodol?
Right here.
I can't see. There's a big post in the way, I'm sorry. There you go. Is anybody else here?
Johnson?
Oh, Mr. Johnson. There you go, Dr. Johnson, thank you. Thank you for your participation. Very good. I do want to thank the staff of Johnson-Walbach. That has to be a tremendous undertaking to move a whole school over to a different building and move it all back about three weeks later. So that, a lot of extra work and time was put in by our staff, and I want to give them a round of applause. Thank you. Mr. Dougal?
Thank you. Just want to agree with everyone else that negotiations is going very well. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this, and I want everyone to know that we appreciate the team that does that work on both sides. Also, wanted to express our appreciation for the information that we have shared with the Board recently from our member survey, and that we very much appreciate that you're taking this to heart and intending to look into it further. I can't make any promises. Also, I wanted to say that in the case of the snow days, I would like to thank our ESP for generously being willing to work April 21st in their survey, and also thank the Board for opening up their options so that everybody could be comfortable with that decision. Thank you very much.
Let's hope we don't have any more snow days to contend with, so... Mr. LaRue?
Good evening. I wanted to pass along some information that's been going on within the district over the last month, one and a half, possibly. First, McClure Theater Department has been selected as one of the 100 U.S. high schools to be considered to perform at the Edinburgh Festival of Scotland in 2015. That's obviously very significant. Probe Center students won top prize in the Show Me a Movie Contest in the elementary school category. Obviously, we're very proud of our probe students for their significant efforts. McClure South Berkeley students won a bronze and a silver medals at the recent Family Career and Community Leaders of America Competition in Dixon, Missouri. The District Spelling Bee was held this week. Holman Elementary fifth grader Estefany Estrada won, and she will go on to compete in the Post-Dispatch Regional Spelling Bee. Wedgewood Elementary was featured on KMOB this week for its USDA Healthy U.S. Schools Silver Award. This award recognizes exceptional school PE, food service, and wellness education programs promoting student health. And there were only 29 schools in Missouri that were able to receive this award. The strategic planning process, there's much interest in this process, it's continuing. There will be more shared during tonight's meeting on this. More than 40 parents and community members participated in the focus groups on January 29th, and we look forward to continuing to work with parents and community members as we develop this plan. McClure Palmes, recently completed in the 33rd Annual Yavon Pole Dance Team Competition at Limber High School. They received two second-place awards, one third-place award, and received one of only four awards given to the 87 teams that participated for most memorial routine. Just a couple more. Last week, the-- it was National School Council, and our district has 32 school guidance counselors that assist our students and families every day, and we certainly appreciate their contribution. Finally, congratulations to McClure North. Farts went over Chauvinade, number one ranked team in the area, on its victory last night, 70 to 68 road win. Very significant, we just wanted to mention.
Thank you. It is good to see all the, all the great things we do in this district. Great students, great staff. The Board updates this portion of the meeting for audience participation regarding items listed on the seat needs agenda. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and limit during march to three minutes. In keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, speakers should remain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. According to policy, the Board will not respond to public comments. Time is allotted at the end of the public session for suggestions and/or questions from the audience on other subjects, not on tonight's agenda. While counting on the podium, please identify items 11 through 30 that will be addressed. Somebody would like to speak to the Board and the seat?
The D.C. Board. My name is Archilla Buford, and I'm a parent of the district. And in regards to the agenda item, I would guess it would be agenda item number 11. And I'm going to start by saying, excuse my ignorance, in regards to how the Board operates, but I need some clarification. When this time is allowed at this particular point in the meeting for audience participation, it just seems a little premature to me for this to be the time. It almost seems as if when information is being presented, it will give parents an opportunity or individuals an opportunity at that time to be able to ask questions. So I'm not really sure, again, I'm being very sincere when I say I'm just really ignorant to why this would, you know, be set up and structured this way. So I don't know if you can help explain or give some explanation behind that. I would appreciate that. And then finally, would you like to respond?
Sure. I will respond to that. The, this participation point is so that the audience or the community has a chance to have us, let us know their feelings on items that we're going to be voting on tonight. So it's your opportunity to, that's why we say list the agenda item, that's why we say talk about it now. Anything regular comment, any other comments you want to make that don't participate or that don't pertain to items that are on the agenda, that's why we save that for last. But this is just an opportunity for the community to voice their opinion on items that we're voting on. That's why it's at this time.
Okay. And that does make sense, the only issue with that, and so then we would have to just talk later to see how would parents or how would individuals be aware, more in-depth aware of the issues, even though we may have an agenda to review, to know what's going to be talked about and voted on? We don't really have in-depth information until, so when you're presenting it at the Board meeting, and so it really doesn't give us an opportunity to really ask the questions that may need to be asked about those decisions that are being made?
We just, that's, say, Mrs. Hogshead, you've been doing this for a long time. Do you want to--
Well, if you, you can get the agenda, it's posted ahead of time, and if there's an agenda item, let's say, social studies textbooks, and you want to know more about the social studies textbooks for the sixth graders that we're voting on, at that time you can contact Mr. LaRue or any of the cabinet members and find out more about that particular agenda item. And then you have more information when we're discussing it to know a little bit more about what we're talking about. So when it's posted on the Friday before the board meeting, that gives you time to look at it and then ask questions between that time and Wednesday.
All right, thank you very much, that was very helpful. Before I take my seat, I do just want to mention the fact that when you are open and you get to the point where you talk about board updates, and the statement that is made, which is, these are items that the board feels individuals might be interested in knowing, or that the other board members may want to know more information about. The fact that, I'm pretty certain that at least 60% of moral parents or individuals here tonight would like to have an update about the superintendent, as well as some information about what time that closed hearing is going to be held. The fact that that is not even discussed, and we just continue to carry on business as usual, you know, I just think that is really unfair to the citizens of this area. And I think we need to be mindful of that, when we're giving updates, be mindful of the things that people are really concerned about, and not to skirt over that.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, my name is Fay Hamad, and I have a student, actually two boys, one that I teach in Nebraska, seventh grade, and a senior that's graduating from Kornor. And I'm a very, very proud mother. And one thing is bothering me this year, that we were told that the graduation is going to be held at the field of the school, and if it rains, it's going to be taken to the gym. So, me, my son, his friends, I mean, mothers, I wish there were more parents that would, you know, support this. Came tonight, which I know they are, there is. I'm sorry, I get nervous in front of a couple, but it's just the idea, if it rains or we get a storm, we end up in the gym. Now, we're going to end up with two people from each family, and I think that is not fair. Or, you know, for the limited space for us, just to have two people from each family. So I was hoping, I sent emails, and I am hoping if you guys can consider this, and maybe move it back to the arena or any other place that would allow more guests from each family to attend the graduation. Either way, we have to wait for the rain or storm, you know how Santa Lucia is. It's not, we don't know how it's going to end up. I would like my family, friends, you know, his brothers, his dad to be at the, you know, the graduation party. Just in case it gets in the gym, so. I'm wishing, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Just to speak to that quickly, it is Item 16, and we'll be looking at information tonight on our graduation in possible locations. Let's take a 10-minute recess to talk to the recipients of the awards this evening. We'll get back at 7:45. Consent Agenda, Administration presents the following items for consent agenda. Mr. Chapo, would you read the dispersments?
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $6,921,396.5. Operational dispersments, $1,959,856.54. For a grand total of $8,881,353.59.
Any emotions, accept the consent agenda? I have a second. Agreed by Mrs. Thompson, and second by Mr. Chapo, accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same time, or no? Motion carries. Building level progress, we're going to start with. Mrs. White soul, Dr. Land.
We have three principals here this evening that will share unique programs that contribute to the overall success of their school. And a PowerPoint on their strategic area, strategic area focus point update was shared with the board of education. Now, Adrienne, introduce the first elementary principal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At this time, I'm going to ask Lisa Hazel, Principal of Hallsberry Elementary School, to come at this time and share a very proud accomplishment initiative from Hallsberry Elementary School.
Okay, good evening, board. I have the honor of serving as the principal of Hallsberry. We are always as a team looking for ways to ensure that we have a great learning environment for students. We are looking at focusing on how to build strong classroom community, and at the same time, helping and supporting students with social issues. A lot of times I feel questions about bullying, concerns from parents, and so, we were able to adopt the OVAAS program this year, and very beneficial for our school. It was free of charge. I have a team of teachers that worked to lead that. And Sarah Fitzpatrick led it that team this year, she's here this evening, I want to thank her for that. So the team started planning last year before we started, they had a day of professional development, and they planned a day of training for every staff member that comes in contact with Hallsberry students, including bus drivers, cafeteria staff, so I thank those departments for sending their staff to join us that evening, that day actually. And we had a whole day of training, and then about a month and a half later, we launched it for students. This is a visual, OVAAS is a collective effort, so everybody in our school community is focusing on that. The visual that you have up here is our art teacher during her art classes for the intermediate students featured a art contest, and it was a poster contest for bullying. And so, this was the poster that won, our students got to vote on it, and then became a design for our T-shirt for the school this year. The young artist that designed this is here this evening with her family, Dominique Spann. So she'd stand for a minute, thank you Dominique. So, OVAAS clearly defines bullying, so knowledge is power, and it empowers students and staff to address bullying. And that has really provided a consistent language across all settings. And it's great when we talk with kids then, we go back to this definition, and it's very clear. So that's really empowering for students, and the common language and consistency is empowering for staff. Mr. Ranel Parker, one of our former parents, launched our assembly this year about speaking up and out on bullying. So he joined us for that, we were glad that he came back. We have some expectations, we're very clear with students, and students committed to these expectations. So after we taught them to students, they, this is a picture of them signing a bully-free wall, saying, we make this commitment that we're going to be bully-free, and we're going to stand up for kids that are being bullied. Karen Buckley, our parent liaison, sponsored this piece of that for our school community. I want to thank Karen, she's here this evening too, thank you Mrs. Buckley. Is about providing a great environment for kids, and this is the result. These are our kindergartners wearing their bully-free T-shirts on the school T-shirt day. I want to thank them, and I want to thank my staff that's here this evening to support us tonight. So it's been a great program, it's really been great for our school community. It has, we do feel like this is the contributing factor that has reduced our office referrals this year. We have reduced them by half than they were last year. This is the only thing that we're doing differently this year related to that. And there's a classroom meeting component that is very powerful. We had really looked into classroom meetings to build community. OVAAS has that incorporated in, so it makes it easy for the teachers to do that, and it also helps with addressing any issues that might be happening in the classroom. So it's been pretty powerful for us this year. If the staff in the whole group can stand up? Thank you, staff, we're committing to this.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Hazel, can we give Ms. Hazel and her staff? We have two more elementary schools, and at this time, I'm going to ask Suzette Sims from Cool Valley to come up at this time. And she's going to focus on STEM at her school.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. LaRue and Dr. Land, thank you so much. As she said, I am Ms. Sims from Cool Valley Elementary, and this is Ms. Merkel, and I'm so tech savvy that she has to come up here and tell me. Why the slide is going through? All right. During this past year at Cool Valley, the staff reflected on our test scores and things that we felt we needed to do in order to be successful. So, I'm going to put my glasses on. So we implemented two programs this year, one being Science Days, in which we do on our early release days, and then we continued with our Career Day, which Cool Valley had been doing for the previous 15 years. And this was to help us with Career Day to incorporate our college and career readiness. So our slide presentation this evening will highlight the high standards that we set for our students. There was a buy-in from the faculty to increase student achievement, and to develop, and to develop productive citizens within our community. During our Career Day, we've had representatives from several vendors, such as Junior Achievement, MySide, and Boeing, and they spent their entire day with us. And our counselor, Mrs. Reins, which is here, who is here today, was very instrumental in contacting those companies. This was a community outreach where the businesses partnered with the school to support and address our future community needs. Students focused on business and finance to help better prepare for the global communities, and the lessons correlated with our curriculum. So in second grade, they worked on things like the community, and just worked even with our kindergartners in various lessons. Through both our Science and Career Day activities, we focused on STEM. And STEM is learning through science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. On our early release days, we do focus on our Science Days. This past summer, we had four teachers to attend Wash U for STEM training. On our early release days, we teach science in all areas. And as the slide goes through, you will see even our art teacher and our physical ed teacher teaching science experiments. Collectively among the faculty, we are accountable for students' learning at high levels. The science activities hold our students accountable for their own learning. Our students are so enthusiastic about Science Day, that our attendance has actually gone up on those early release days. So at Cool Valley, we share our vision for learning, and we are advocates for all of our students. Thank you. If you would please have the Cool Valley staff, please thank them. Our teacher and a PE teacher blowing up pumpkins.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. And I just want to focus, she said that her attendance goes up on those half days. Thank you, Ms. Sims, for having the focus on attendance. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Heinz, Peter, to please come up, and he is from Bermuda Elementary School.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to share some of the unique opportunities that our students get at Bermuda Elementary, and specifically through a volunteer that I'm going to talk about that leads our STEM program at Bermuda. That person is Chris Miller. Chris Miller is an engineer from Boeing, and he's done a lot of STEM activities for our students, and not just our STEM students, but all of our students that I'm going to share with you tonight. One of those activities is mentoring. He has talked to some of his colleagues at Boeing, and brought in some colleagues of Boeing to come in and tutor and mentor some of our fifth and sixth grade students in the areas of science and math. The students are very excited when they come in because they're able to work on the math that they're struggling with, and they're able, they're there to help them work through that. And also, there's a lot of new learning going on. In the pictures that you see here, these students are learning about electricity, and they're making circuits, and they use a circuit board to create circuits, and they follow this catalog here that shows them exactly how to set them up, and then they test those circuits, and that's something that they're really, really excited about doing. They can't wait for the mentors to show up, they're always asking when they're going to be there. Also, flight simulator, why wouldn't they be excited about that? Chris Miller designed a flight simulator in a, the car contraption there, I'm sorry, the trailer. And he designed this flight simulator, it's incredible. And the students, of course, in STEM have to get through all their learning in order to get to the flight. And once they're able to, they're able to test out what they've learned in the flight simulator. I was not as successful in the flight simulator, my plane crashed pretty quickly, but I wasn't able to be in the STEM session, so hopefully next time I'll learn from that. But through Chris Miller, our school has gotten very excited about science, technology, engineering, and math behind, especially aerospace is one that he's really focusing on. In this next slide here, talks about drag, lift, thrust, and weight. Those are some of the key concepts that they're learning during their STEM sessions, and they could very well tell you exactly how those affect flight within school. And also, they have, in the school, they build, like seen the picture, they build models of planes, and they use those to talk about those different key concepts that they have there. Also, they provided field trips for us. Chris Miller invited us to Boeing, and some students got to go visit him at Boeing, and go to their museum, and transfer some of the things they're learning through school into their museum. So that was really exciting for the kids as well. One thing that was a special treat this year was, he brought in a motivational speaker, Risan Bahadi, who is a leading African-American cyclist in the country. And he came in and had him bring his equipment, and the students were really excited to learn about his bike and his helmet, and the technology and engineering behind those items, and how that made him become such a great cyclist. And he reached out to him, knew that he had a race, you know, in St. Louis, and was able to bring him in for that assembly, and that was a really exciting assembly that we had in Bermuda. These are some of the future engineers that graduated through his STEM sessions. And I'm proud to say that when you talk to students now, ask them what they want to become, engineer is one of the things on their list now that they would like to become, which that's fascinating to hear. So I contribute most of that to Chris Miller and everything he's brought to us, and our teachers that apply relevance to everything that they're teaching and to their future lives. So if I can have Bermuda teachers stand, will you recognize them? I'm not sure if Chris Miller was able to make it tonight, if you're here. I didn't think he was able to make it tonight, unfortunately. So thank you very much.
And we're going to finish with our last presentation at the building level, is one of our high schools, Dr. Shane Happel, Kornor.
All right, thank you for this opportunity to the school board, to Mr. LaRue, Ms. Rue, and to our audience as well. If you're in the audience, you did not get one of these cards here, raise your hand please, and Dr. Weller, and Mr. Bills will come by and drop one out for you. All right, as they're passing that out, I'd like to start my presentation, talk to you about my lunch today. Today, we had our Star Pride Lunch, where we had an opportunity to honor 115 students at McClure. at McLaurin High School who had a 4.0. They had 95% attendance or higher. They had no tardies. They had no referrals, period. Again, 115 McLaurin students.[611.41][611.41][applause] I wasn't really going to tell you what I had to eat. But these students were here today in this exact same room. Mr. Paul Schrader, actually, Cam was our guest speaker. We learned all about Desert Pete. So if you have any specific questions, you can ask him. We'll hear about that. But it was an awesome ceremony. And it was a lot of hard work done by Mr. Noel, our assistant principal. A lot of hard work by a group of teachers in our parent-teacher group, putting this whole thing together again to honor the best and brightest students that walk the halls of McLaurin each and every day. What was interesting to me is I was actually talking to a staff person over at the district level, and they were complaining about teenagers. And as we were talking, all these kids were walking down the steps. And I told them what was going to happen here in about 10 minutes from that point. That person stopped in her tracks and he said, "You know what? I gotta be careful not to just jump on a negative train and talk about the negative things we know happen in our neighborhoods with our kids, because here's living proof that 115 of our students are doing each and every day the right thing." So I was very proud of that moment. The card that I gave you, when Ms. White gave me the challenge of picking something, it was hard for me just to say one thing. So I want to briefly talk about the 10 things on this list. First of all, I'd like to point out Mr. Hampton, Kevin Hampton. If you could, please, stand up, please. We have probably the best high school television studio in the state of Missouri without even no exception. So it's his hard work doing that.[712.04][712.04][applause] I've been to lots of universities, colleges, other high schools across the state of Missouri. I actually used to teach in a TV studio. And I can tell you, there's no comparison to what we have capable-wise in that facility. But by far, it brings a lot of positive and good attention to our district. We have a growing project, Lead the Way Chapter. We're grooming... it was interesting, he was talking about engineers in his last presentation. We're trying to groom some of our current learners to be future engineers. We're trying to attract more females to come in that area as well, because if you look at Rolla and University of Missouri, one of the areas that they really lack is female engineers. So we're really pushing that as well. Our music programs, without a doubt, are some of the best in the entire state of Missouri. We have... the St. Louis Opera Theater can have 20 kids in their company where they train them throughout the year. If you remember the Barnes Brothers, who have been honored in front of the same board, one of them was involved with that. 20 possible students in the St. Louis area. McLaurin North has five out of those 20 slots in the entire St. Louis area. That's so impressive. It's a testimony to Mr. Baker, to Ms. Harlemer, to Ms. Schroyer, Ms. Whissinger, who are all involved in our music programs. So again, I just wanted to highlight that. The teaching faculty is one of the best I've been associated with through my years in education. We have fantastic teachers that go above and beyond each and every day to help our students succeed. I see it every day. You know, teachers don't always want the limelight. They don't want the recognition. Occasionally, you know, everybody likes recognition, but they are doing these things without wanting these things. The support staff, to me, equally does so many things to help our students down the pathway to success. You know, I can tell you, a secretary I know that feeds a student every single day. The student does not get anything from their parent. The student goes to her every single day and gets food from her, so he has something to eat every day. I can tell you, the two ladies in my main office do many things that, you know, no one's ever going to really know about, because they don't want that limelight. They don't want that attention. But I see it each and every day. And we have lots of adults, whether certified or not certified, doing these amazing things for kids. Flip over to the backside of that card. We're frequently honoring both statewide nationally for our star students, about future business leaders, America, and DECA. We've had the national vice president of McLaurin North and DECA within the last five years. We've had also the Missouri vice president for DECA. Right now, we're in the middle of our DECA season with Mr. Lipinski, and they did some awesome things yesterday. They had some winners involved with that. Our alumni have been making positive stamps on the floors of the community for over 40 years. There's a reason we have 30 staff who are graduates of McLaurin North. There's a reason why teachers or students, they come back to the school because they care about McLaurin North. They want to come back, and they want to reinvest into that. And that actually fits into your Desert Pete story earlier, Mr. Schrader. Also, we offer a very challenging, flexible curriculum, which fills the students of all skill sets, interests. We have AP honors in various areas of curiosity. Mr. LaRue mentioned earlier about our win against Shaminah, but it's across the board. We are consistently good at things in that area. And I can tell you this, a lot of my students would not come to school if it wasn't for that option to play a sport or be in a club or participate in a music-type event. They just wouldn't do it. That's the draw to get them there. We get them there. We teach them certain behaviors and how to be good students over four years of time. And that's the hook. And our students get hooked. They want to be part of a successful situation. Then last but not least, I put a picture there of our graduating class to be on May 18th. And those 400 students, they're really what it's all about. If you have any connection to McLaurin North, whether you used to teach there, whether you currently teach there, a student, parent, or anybody, if you would, please stand up
Thank you, Dr. Hopper.
Next up is a before it, students at risk, from Dr. Mark Twain.
Good evening, and thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to present on behalf of At-Risk Programs and Mark Twain Student Support Center. Mark Twain is the alternative school providing services to students throughout the district, kindergarten through 12th grade. Our primary focus is, of course, academics. However, we do extensively work with the kids on behavior modification and social skills as well. Student enrollment from last year, 2012-13, was a total of 474 students. Through the first semester of 13-14 school year, we had serviced 268. Enrollment by program, it's broken down by elementary, middle, high school, and then three subcategories of high school as well. The primary source of students comes from the high school level, I believe, just under 200 of our total 268 students for the first semester. At-Op is an SSD program servicing students that are at least 17 years of age or older and credit deficient. This particular program works with students, gets them participating in community-based vocational instruction and co-op while also working towards recovering lost credit. The Missouri Option Prep Program is a program that tries to meet the needs of students trying to get into the Missouri Option Program. They are deficient in either one or more of the prerequisite courses, or also, they could be low in their TACE scores, which is the test for the basic education, which is kind of our gatekeeper into the program. So regardless of what their need is, we then have things that we can do in order to further prepare them and get them into Missouri Options with the potential to graduate on time and get their diploma with their kindergarten cohort. The Missouri Option Program itself allows students that are behind or deficient in credits to complete this DUCI-approved program, which does require three prerequisite courses, 15 hours a week of community service, or a job-training environment. The ultimate is that they will go and take the high school equivalency test, which is no longer the GED, but is the HSET. And upon completion, they will receive their high school diploma and get to walk across their stage with their graduating class. Missouri Option graduates from last year, we had a total of 200... or, I wish, 200. 22 graduates that otherwise may not have received their diploma. This year, through the first semester, we have had eight graduates, actually nine here within this past month. We did graduate another student as well. And with our current numbers and the status of each individual student, we're looking at approximately 25 to 30 graduates through the Missouri Option Program alone this school year. Academic initiatives to support student learning. We have Friday Academic Intervention for students that are falling behind academically to further support and provide tutoring for them. A continuation of our academic labs, Missouri Option Prep, as I discussed previously. Gyro, or Get Your Read On, where it's a silent sustained reading, where we engage the students in reading on a weekly basis. They read every day, but that time is specifically cut out of our schedule to make sure that they are engaged in reading opportunities. EdMentum and Plato, which is online coursework, and Little Creek Exploration, which is at our elementary school level. Academically, while we do engage in STAR testing as well, to get a more accurate gauge of how students develop while they're with us, since we have such a transient population, we utilize Skills Tutor, and we have a target growth of 10% in the areas of English Language Arts and Math. And through the first semester, we actually surpassed that 10% in English Language Arts with a plus 14.6%, and Math with 20.8%. So we are showing academic gains. Behaviorally, we set a target, a reduction of 5% for our behavior incidents, out-of-school suspensions, and days lost to suspensions. Therapeutic initiatives that we provide to the students while they attend with us include aggression replacement training, morning gathering, which we have recently expanded into the program for the PM students, Thursday behavior intervention groups, Great Circle, which is individual and group therapy, which began in January, the start of the second semester. And we also provide personal fitness and circuit training for an extra release for the students. Here are just some pictures of our morning gathering and our Thursday behavior interventions and some of the activities that the students are engaged in. Academic lab, EdMentum and Plato, Get Your Read On, our Gyro program, and then our elementary students getting prepared and off to Little Creek. As of January 2014, we were fortunate enough to receive funding through a grant in Great Circle that provides individual therapy, group therapy, and family therapy to students and families that participate in our program. So we're really excited about that. Mark Twain does try to reach out to the community and, you know, do positive outreach programs. We have five students that are Missouri Option students currently placed throughout the district to provide community service in our schools. So they're giving back to their community through their home schools. We also, ongoing, have relationships with the Ronald McDonald Charities, helping to support the Ronald McDonald House here in St. Louis. Breast cancer awareness. We did have the students write letters to survivors of encouragement and, you know, just to reach out to them. As of this week, this Friday, the students did create Valentines that they will then distribute to local nursing homes and elderly. And then we also have the Titan Voice, which is a student-led monthly newsletter. It is student-driven. All the students, you know, Mr. Walker, who is in the crowd, our support specialist, does oversee this particular project, but it's just amazing the amount of kids that are involved in it and the product that they produce on a monthly basis. And then we do post that on our webpage, so that can be viewed by anyone anytime, anywhere, because we're very proud of it, and we want to share the good news of Mark Twain. Our data dashboard, as I had talked about earlier, Skills Tutor in English Language Arts and Math, we are showing gains. As far as the amount of suspensions, at the end of last year, we had 163 total suspensions. Our goal for this year was 155, and currently, we're at 103. The number of behavior incidents resulting in office referrals from last year was 313. The goal for this year was 297, a reduction of 5% again, and currently, we are at 208. Our 90% attendance, 90% of the students, 90% of the time, is at 59.7%. I do want to make a note that we do receive a lot of students with truancy issues, and that is their means of arriving to us. So we're kind of initially at a deficit with them, but we try to work extensively to create better patterns of attendance while they are with us. And as a result, as a school, we are just under 92% attendance year-to-date. Achieving the standards, we just want to work collaboratively, staff, students, and parents, partnering to establish positive home-school relationships and promote high expectations within all of our students. And I just see it fitting to end with this particular slide. You know, the Mark Twain family, the staff, that's really what makes all this work, and that's what makes this tick. I can't say enough about them. I could go on, you know, for a lengthy amount of time, which I'm sure you appreciate, but I will not. But I just saw it fitting to end with that and to pay tribute to them for the hard work that they do on a daily basis. And it's a tough environment, you know, a good part of the time. I do have some staff members in the audience. If they would please stand, I would like to acknowledge them.[1525.04][1525.04][applause]
Next is parents and family and community involved. Mr. Beals. Need a motion to accept the At-Risk Students Report? And move the second, we accept the At-Risk Student Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Beals.
Good evening, boys in the audience.
Good evening.
I'd like to first just start off by recognizing Oliver Reed Wilcox. She's in the audience. And Oliver Reed Wilcox is actually the current liaison, as well as... she heads current liaison as well as the 21st Century Program for us. And Carol Janney. I'd like to just recognize both of them. We're actually the Office of Community and Parent Engagement, actually, an office of Reed, Reed and myself. So I'm very, very proud of the work they do. And many times, we've asked a lot of different questions. There are a lot of individuals, a lot of parents, a lot of community leaders, and a lot of students. And I'm just very happy, and I want to publicly thank them for all the work they do.[1629.12][1629.12][applause] I don't think I would really have to say, but, you know, without strong people in schools, without strong parents, without strong community, students won't make it. And that's what really the Office of Community and Parent Engagement is all about. The Office of Community and Parent Engagement has been in existence for three years now. It has become a beneficial and integral and vital force in which the school district further connects, maintains positive relationships with district stakeholders. The central office location offers a common and familiar and convenient place to obtain the latest school district information on current events, district policy, and personal experience to address sensitive student issues and concerns. One of the things that I can say that I am most proud of, my 21 years in this district, is the fact that I'm able to help those who need help the most. And that's a wonderful situation to be in and working out of this office. The overall success of this program is immeasurable. It is interwoven in the fabric of all the district programs that provide support for and assist students in achieving their goals. However, the interest and the impact of the Community and Parent Engagement programs is evident by looking at all the large number of students, parents, staff, and community stakeholders involved and in attendance at regular scheduled meetings and events held throughout the district. So in other words, there's not... nothing that goes on in the school district that the Community and Parenting Office and Engagement Office is not involved in. And I'm very, very happy that we help to support all of our schools and all of our programs in the district. And I, if you would, I would just like to mention just a couple of our major accomplishments that, you know, I think that are worth mentioning. Number one, I just want to start off with the Back to School Fund there. It was a wonderful event, a lot of work put into it, a lot of energy. And just to give you an idea, the first year we did the program, which was two years ago, we started with about 100... about 1,000 participants in the program who participated. Last or this year, we actually did up to just right at 4,000 participants. So you can see the growth of individuals coming out, community members, parents, students, just coming out to participate. And that's just speak to the work that we're doing as a district. The event offered just health screening, free haircuts for students, school supplies, and just critical school information. So it wasn't just an opportunity for students to come out and go on the jumps and things like that and just have fun. It was really vital information that we thought parents, as well as students, needed to get them off on a great start. And that's really what school was all about. Another one of the great accomplishments I'm very, very proud of is just our bullying prevention form. prevention form that we actually held last year, but we built on that. And all schools now have actively engaged in anti-bullying campaigns. I don't have to tell you all that bullying and cyberbullying leads the news stories today. And I'm very happy that, you know, we're ahead of that curve. We are working actively with our schools and with our parents and with our students to not have those things occur in our building. So I'm very, very proud of that. Workshops over the district, our participation is very, very strong, especially in the areas of at-risk students, because I said, many of those students are the students that need help the most. Also, I'd like to mention, just a little, we're continuing to do work on the best parenting pedagogy by Michael Nguyen. Michael Nguyen is a world renowned speaker, actually, who came into the district and gave a lot of our parents, just a lot of helpful tips on how to be successful, how these students can be successful, successful parenting tips, and we're continuing his work. So I'm very, very proud of that. And just some of the partnership buildings that we have with key stakeholders in our community, like Oasis, Ferguson Youth Initiative, 21st Century Program, United Way, St. Louis Initiative for Reduced Violence, and the list goes on. And I think it's those organizations that build partnerships with those organizations that will make us stronger as a school district. And lastly, what I'd like to go through on is our volunteer program. Our volunteer program in the district is stronger than ever now. We're signing up more and more individuals every day who are coming into our schools, working with our teachers, working with our students to build a strong community. So we're very, very proud of that and plan to continue that initiative. So I'm just very, very happy with the work we're doing, and I just hope the board will see fit to continue this program as a district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beals. Need a motion to accept the Parent, Family, and Community Involvement reporting.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Huxton, seconded by Mr. Ebert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beals. Emily Baker and Rebecca Buckley, librarian presentation.
We actually had a change of presenters, so it's Emily Baker and Ginny Gray. Okay, good evening. You already know our names, so I won't say it again. We are very happy to be here to update everyone on the great things happening in our libraries, and we're going to do that in two main ways. The first way is with how we support our staff, and then the second way will be how we support our students.
Okay, I get to tell our staff support, I'm really sure. Okay. All right. Forays and Forests librarians support staff in a number of ways. A, in the area of curriculum support and lesson collaboration. We help teachers by creating outstanding and engaging lessons. We provide materials for them to use in their instruction, and we collaborate on projects and in research. So a quick example that happened just this week, a kindergarten teacher runs into the library at like eight in the morning and says, "Oh, I need a book for a Cause and A Cycle lesson that I'm doing today." Well, I would instantly know which book would be perfect for her lesson, probably if you give a master cookie. I would be able to find it in a snap and I would save the day. And this is something that librarians do all the time. And we also, of course, engage in long-range planning as well with our teachers. In the area of tech support, librarians keep current on the latest technology. We help teachers use online resources and tools, such as educational blogs, academic websites, and professional journals. For example, I help teachers at the beginning of the year create GoAnimate videos to illustrate their school and classroom rules, and then that's something they can also use with new students, so that they can set the routine and let them know what the expected behaviors are in a consistent manner. And moving on to Common Core support, we're all focused on Common Core now. We can be a tremendous resource for our schools as we make the transition into the Common Core era. Librarians are wonderful at finding informational texts and videos that would support a lesson, a project, or research that a classroom is doing. And speaking of research, librarians can assist faculty and staff also in finding reputable scholarly sources for academic endeavors, so the teacher or an administrator is working on an advanced degree, and they don't have to go any further than their school library for help.
Now moving on to students. Every day, librarians across the district teach students things they need to know to be successful and reach their full potential. We collaborate with teachers so that our lessons tie into topics the students are learning about in their classrooms. We show them the best ways to find useful information and how to navigate the ever-changing formats for both physical books and online resources. The library is many things to our student users. It's another learning classroom, a peaceful and relaxing environment, a mecca of materials to read for pleasure and for academic use, a comfortable place in the school where they are not graded, and a safe place to be before and after school. Librarians also in our district sponsor clubs. Examples include book clubs, writing, game, reader advisory groups, Read, Write, and Run, which is a St. Louis area club, and other things that are more specific to our schools. Librarians run reading incentive programs like Accelerated Reader to encourage students to read more and effectively, and we coordinate book fairs, sometimes several a year, to help students get affordable books to read at home. And librarians work as a group to put on a district-wide library festival at the end of the school year to celebrate literacy and honor those students who committed to reading the Missouri Reading Award books. Every day, librarians in our district are making a difference in our students' lives. We have the possibility of seeing the same child for up to seven years of their life, depending on what level we teach in. In that time, we've become more than just a person who scans books for them, we've become part of their lives. And then we have a short video that has some actual testimonies from some of our students, Thank you for your time.
Ms. Weitzel, graduation 2014.
Information has been provided to the board for consideration of holding the 2014 graduation ceremonies over at St. Charles Community. Do you have any questions for me, does any information you received?
I need a, I need a motion to, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to move graduation again back to Family Arena, is there any discussion?
So are all three high schools going back to the Family Arena, or will...
I have to confirm with if you're running it at all three high schools, or would be able to come back, if they, May 18th would be that Sunday day is available for all three high schools.
I guess my only thought was, and maybe we can visit this later, whatever, but where was the disconnect on, on the, I guess, in the communications about graduation and the potential of moving to campus? Because as we spoke, there seemed, it seemed to still be a question, I think, if I'm speaking out of turn, please let me know, you always do. But I think there was, it was still sort of in question for the board, and then it seemed to be expressed to us that that wasn't, that Family Arena was no longer an option. And so do we have a sense, or maybe we can investigate sort of where that disconnect was?
Right, and I think after the last, I mean, December board meeting, when that was clear to me that I was, was under the impression of one thing, I think the board was under the impression of the other. I did speak with Mitch at the Family Arena, and I did, it was a verbal conversation, he was not able to produce, he didn't give me the correspondence that he recalled maybe having, so I tried to get that confirmation from, if then if that was the case where one school was not allowed to come back, it was not communicated to me after the fact, and Mitch said that he was fine with all three schools returning and was not an issue.
So same to say, we just had incorrect information?
I don't, what I will say is what happened after the graduation was that the one, the principal decided at that moment to say, you know what, sorry for the incident that happened, we will not come back, and that was the, one of the letters that I shared with you that she wrote. So beyond that, that information didn't come back to me, and I tried to get that confirmation.
I got you.
So it wasn't able to, I had a verbal, but wasn't able to get anything in writing about that, unfortunately. I did try.
No, I appreciate, I know, I know you've been great, everything has been fine. If I'm not mistaken, that's not the information we got, was that correct?
So I apologize, have you had some misinformation at some point?
Yeah, no, I don't think it's your place to apologize, but thanks.
Well, I think it was a confusing issue from the beginning, because we thought two out of three, and then you get into the budget, and how that all breaks out, things like that, meaning if you're going to two different venues, you know.
Yeah.
And then, I don't think you were at a board meeting where we kind of thought we could reinvest back into the district rather than, you know, lease a place, but, but the numbers kind of look budget-neutral and, and it seems definitely what the public wants. You know, I'm all in favor.
Sure, no, absolutely, and I just, I think, I think my point is more about making sure that the accurate information is present so that whoever's on the board can make the right decision based on.
Just for clarification, and so if everybody knows, what's this going to cost us to put it back at the arena?
The cost will be approximately around $40,000.
$40,000.
Which would come out of one of my line items, I have a budget within secondary education, which is for leased facilities, and so it would come out of my budget that I, and I allocate my money and make sure that I have, I made cuts this year with my budget, but there were certain things that I made sure that if I needed, needed to have money for. So actually, what happens is, is the deposit comes out of this fiscal year, but we received a final bill after graduation, so it actually gets invoiced in the next fiscal year. Does that make sense?
Sure. And so it's a $40,000 total cost, but how does that relate, if you can share with everybody, how does that relate to having it in the district? In terms of, you know, having to augment with audiovisual rentals and third-party?
It's about the same or possibly a little bit higher. The estimate that we, as I did the cost analysis, it was $51,000. The hard part that, you know, when, when, some of them were very easy to estimate, because you know what it's going to cost to rent equipment and what have you, but some of the labor, there's some prep work involved with grounds before and after, so certainly you want to make sure that you're covering more of that than less. So I would say it may not been to be $51,000, but it'll be, it'll be definitely a need and cost. And many of the components that we would have to have, like the security, or hire ticket takers, all of, a lot of those components are all included in the contract with the Family Arena. So they, we have, they have people that are parking folks, they have their ticket takers who are used to dealing with individuals when they come in, because there aren't a lot of table manners in. So a lot of that is, that stress is lifted off of our staff and people that deal with that on a regular basis, or their support. And there's very minimal additional costs that happen. We do have, there's a few things that they don't provide. We bring our own keyboard, our risers, and they certainly get our diplomas transported over there. That cost is absorbed by the buildings, have a building level commencement account, and so that cost is very minimal, combined amongst the three schools. So I think last year, each school paid maybe $300 to absorb that overtime cost for the maintenance personnel that transported and set the time there.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any further questions? All those in favor of moving graduation to Family Arena for 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. There you go, graduation is at the Family Arena on May 18th.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your consideration for the location. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, where'd you go? Don't go away yet. ACT District Choice Testing. Ms. Paul Weitzel.
Good evening, board. Yes, I'm short. MSET V Performance Standard III and Indicators 1 through 3 of College and Career Readiness requires districts to provide adequate post-secondary preparation for all students. The ACT District Choice Testing will afford all 11th graders the opportunity to take the ACT at no cost to them. The cost for the district is approximately $34,000 and is budgeted from the district assessment account and secondary education funds.
I need a motion to accept the ACT District Choice Testing.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ebert and seconded by Mrs. Huxton, is there any discussion, questions for?
Can you tell me how many juniors actually participate in taking the ACT?
For the district ACT choice?
Yes. Is it 100%?
Yes.
It is.
And is this given on a specific day? I know ACT normally has given dates when it's available. Do all of our students take it the same day, or do they take it different days?
Yes, they all take it on the same day, and then those that are absent on that day, there is designated makeup day.
It's Wednesday, April 23rd.
It's a Wednesday, it's a school day?
Yes.
That makes it much more convenient, doesn't it?
During the school, I guess.
So that's not an official ACT day? No, but for a District Choice Test, so ACT specifies two dates, for District Choice Tests, there's one in March and one in April, and so any, any districts in the, across the United States that are participating in District Choice ACT will be doing it on that day. So it becomes a, like one of the six ACT test days on a Saturday, but during the school day for those that are having all of their students participate in it and making up the cost.
And I would say that I think this provides an opportunity for some of our students who might not think, I am a college student, get surprised, I know I have freshman advisor who had taken, what was it, the PACT at that time, they took in eighth grade, and she wanted to convince me that she was stupid and had to fail all of her classes. And the test scores said, no, you're not, and it was quite a nice lever to try and work on improving her thinking about what she could accomplish.
Right, ACT is the gatekeeper for college.
Yes.
And certainly, you can encourage students to sign up, but they have to do that on their own, they have to go on a Saturday, so this brings that to them. And other districts that I spoke to that give District Choice ACT, that's exactly what they've said, that this, some students who choose not to take, I think that they, he or she meant them to do it, and it changes when you provide that opportunity for them.
And I'm glad we do it at a time when they still have time to make choices on like 12th grade schedules, if they need to take a particular class, that they will still be able to make those changes. be able to make those changes before the fall starts. And the fall also gives them plenty of time if they do decide, oh, maybe college is part of my life, to meet the deadlines for applications.
And certainly, from that point too, if they wanted to retake it again to improve their score, give them some time for that as well.
But they would have to pay for that on their own, right?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm just trying to make clear that everybody knows.
Right, right.
But that's, that's another great point, because I know my youngest daughter went up like five points by retaking it. It can make a big, big difference if you retake it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the ACT District Choice Testing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Educator evaluation. Same choice. Dr. Rich and NEE, Laura Samlin.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to introduce two exceptional educators, Dr. Kelly Brock, who is an assistant principal at McClure High School, and Laura Samlin, who is an instructional coach at Parker Road. They have worked tirelessly over the last year and a half on the educator evaluation revision committee, and they will be talking with the board this evening, tonight, about our recommendation to meet the compliance with the new DESI guidelines. Laura and Kelly.
Good evening. So, I'd like to start with giving you a little bit of background about what we've been doing for the last year and a half. Before that, actually, going back to the 2010-11 school year, Senate Bill 291 came out and said that all districts must adopt teaching standards in the district. And so, with that in mind, we formed the Teaching Standards Committee in 2010-11, and then the board adopted those teaching standards in the 2011-12 school year. And then, after that, Missouri's ESBA waivers, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act waiver, that gave us flexibility from the no child left behind standards, but as a part of that, it says that school districts had to align their teacher evaluation system with seven principles of effective evaluation. And so, we formed the Teacher Evaluation Revision Committee in the 2012-13 school year, in the fall of that year, and we've been working since then to come into compliance with those seven principles. So, these are the seven principles of effective evaluation, and I want to spend our time focusing on two, four, and six from that list, as those will be the biggest shifts for our district. So, number two is to use differentiated levels of performance. In our teacher evaluation system right now, we have two levels. Basically, we have not met and mets, and that's mad and not levels with these seven principles. So, that's going to be a big shift for us. The system that we're going to recommend for adoption actually has eight levels, and they range from zero to eight, and there's very clear, very clear descriptors of what each of those levels are for every single standard that the teachers are trying to meet. Number four is to include student growth and evaluations, and that's something that we can do under the policy that we have currently, but it's not something that's done regularly with fidelity across the district in the same way. And that's something that needs to change under these principles. So, the committee is still actually meeting. After we adopt a new system, we need to discuss as a committee how exactly those student growth measures are going to be included. That's up to individual districts, but that's something that we were saving for the end of our work. And we're looking at different ways, as a committee, we've discussed different ways that we need to make sure that it's equitable at all levels across all subject areas, and I think that this is going to be the most challenging part of our work, actually, because there are so many different things and different caveats that apply to one level and not another, or one subject area and not another. And so, essentially, we've been saving the hardest decision for last. And then, number six, to include ongoing evaluator training. That's something that we don't really have in our system right now either. We have sessions now and then in the district on teacher evaluation, but they're maybe an hour, an hour and a half, and things are done very differently, which is something that we've learned through our work with administrators and teachers on the committee. Things are done very differently in different buildings under the system that we have. And one of our favorite things about the system that we're recommending is that it's very heavily focused on inter-rater reliability. So, all administrators at the beginning will undergo three full days of training, and they take a test at the end of those three days. You actually have to become certified to be able to evaluate teachers under this system, and that training is renewed every year. So, you do three days in the initial year, and then there's like a one-day refresher course each year after that, and you have to repass the test and re-certify yourself. And new administrators to the district will undergo the three-day training each year. So, that's going to be another major shift for us, but I think it'll be very, very beneficial.
I just want to say too, that this process that we're going through here is another example of administration and the association working cooperatively to do some good work that needs to be done. So, I just kind of wanted to start off with that. But we've spent, we've kind of gone through an entire process here in what we thought we wanted at different points along the travel, as we got to know more about the education evaluation models. We started out by piloting the state model. They came out with a model, and I want to say, most buildings had at least a few educators in each building that piloted that last year. And we found it a little ungainly, there were some concerns, some questions. It, it was time, very time-consuming, people were more focused on that than they were on doing the good lessons that they were trying to get done. So, we kind of moved on from there and decided that we liked that format, but we wanted to make it our own. And so, then we had a time where we thought we would create our own. And as time kind of went by, we realized that we really weren't the experts in this either, so that's when we began to explore outside options. Okay, whoops. We kind of already talked about that. Oh, and then also, obviously, looking at the different models and the cost benefit to each also came into play. We looked at, there was a company called NetCemia that we had, they did a presentation for us. We would have had to create our own model for that, and then they did the technology logistics for us. And you have that as a part of your packet. We also looked at Marzano's, does a piece on education evaluation, and they did a presentation for us, and you'll find that also in your packet. And then, NEE, the Network for Educator Effectiveness out of Mizzou, they also did a presentation for us. And then the other option was just to come create our own.
So, the committee has three recommendations for the board tonight. The first one is to adopt the Network for Educator Effectiveness, NEE, as our system of evaluation. And the reasons for that, we do think it's the best fit for the district, it's a very comprehensive system, so we're only talking about teacher evaluation right now, but they're in the process of developing evaluation tools for administrators, librarians, and counselors as well, and they'll all be aligned with the DESI standards. I like this one here, so it requires the least amount of additional work and training by Ferguson Forest and staff. And that's one of the reasons that we went against creating our own. We discovered through all of our research that we are definitely not the experts, and there are so many systems out there that all have good parts to them, why should we reinvent the wheel if there's something else that'll fit our needs perfectly and provide that training for us? And their expert training, their inter-rater reliability training is something that we would not be able to provide as a district under a system that we developed. And then, since there's such a high level of professional development embedded in this system, we're actually able to fund it through our Title II funds, so it would not have to come out of the district operating budget. Our second recommendation is to adopt the Ferguson Forest and Teaching Standards, so that they're aligned with NEE. So, in the 2011-12 school year, when those standards were adopted, we took the DESI standards and we took our standards, and we merged them together. So, it was, they matched up very closely, but we stayed with language that we, as a district, were more familiar with and more comfortable with, to make the shift easier from one to the other. But under this new system, under NEE, there, the wording is very, very specific, so that it's as objective as possible. And so, we need to revise our standards to match the NEE standards in order for that scale of zero to seven to be accurate for us. And so, they are very similar, because they were similar the first time, so it's mostly the wording that's changing. And then our third recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the Ferguson Forest and Leader Standards. Those are also put out by DESI, and those would be a lot, used to evaluate building administrators, assistant principals, building principals, and things like that. And we know that that's coming. I think that NEE is piloting their administrator system next year, and so I'm not sure if we're, I don't think that we'll get their system until the fifteen, sixteen school year for administrators, but I'm not sure about that. If it's ready before that, we'd like to begin using it before that. As far as the cost goes, as I said, we are proposing that we use Title II funds, and our first year cost out of that fund would be approximately fifty-eight thousand two hundred. There's a twelve dollar per teacher charge, and then it includes all the teacher training, all the administrator training, database access, that's something that we really liked about this, everything is online and it's accessible from anywhere. So, a teacher can say, oh, I had an evaluation today, I wonder if my evaluator posted anything, and they could actually log in and check it from their phone, like I check everything else from my phone. And we can be in classrooms with our iPads or our laptops and have the system open and using it right there, or I can check it from home. And that's something that I think is really beneficial and ease, ease of use. Another benefit to the system is the online library. That's a library of resources for professional development. So, for each of the teaching standards and indicators, there are readings, articles, there are videos that teachers can watch if they say, okay, the indicator is this, what does that actually look like in a classroom? And they can go on and target those things for the various levels and look up those resources on their own. They provide site visits also, so if, if another administrator in my building and I are doing evaluations together and we discover that we're not necessarily, even though we've both been certified and we've gone through this training, we're not rating people exactly the same, we can call on them and they're local. So, we can call on them and they'll come to us, and they'll do some with us, they'll re-anchor us to the standards, and I think that'll be really, really beneficial for us as well. All product upgrades and updates are included in the cost, and then there are survey instruments that are included also for students as far as their classroom experience and things like that. Ongoing costs, so from years two on, the cost goes down dramatically to twenty-eight thousand two hundred, and then if we have a new administrator, it would be eight hundred additional for each new administrator, so they can do that three-day training. And that includes all of the same things as before. And, and I want to say, it also includes all of the training that we're getting, administrators are getting three days, but there's also a full day for teacher leaders, so each school will have a teacher leader assigned, and, and our coordinators will go through that training. And then, it includes training at each building. We have ten sessions, I think, that we're hoping to have to cover all the, all the different buildings in the district for their teachers, and all of this training is included in that class, and since they're local, they'll come out to us as often as we need at no additional charge. Further information on the system can be found at that website, and we also have a packet of information that we're hoping to add to the HR website in the next few days so that staff and teachers can begin to familiarize themselves with that system. That's all we have, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I need a motion to accept the NEE proposal
Second.
For teacher evaluation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt NEE for our evaluation system. Is there any discussion? I do have a couple of questions. One, is this a yearly cost, fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for ongoing?
It's fifty-eight thousand for the first year and about twenty-eight thousand for each additional year after that.
Okay. You say that administrators have to take a, a test to evaluate, is that correct? What happens if they don't pass the test?
They'll go through more training. They'll continue working with the company.
Okay. And the, one thing that always, as a teacher, would, would scare me is the putting the test scores into the evaluation process. Teachers don't get to pick their students, and, you know, you're dealt the hand that you deal with, so that, that part to me is, is always very, very tricky.
Yeah, I, I
So, handle that carefully.
Yeah, I agree. That's kind of why we saved it for last. So, but I think we've had so many discussions over the last year and a half, that, that I think there's been a lot of trust built on the committee between different levels, district administrators and building and teachers. I think now is probably the best time for us to start having those conversations, because we've talked about it, about a few different ways that we can, that we can approach it, and I think we're in a place now that we'll be able to, to do that in a favorable way.
And State Missouri has taken that choice out of our hands, so now it's just figuring out a good, equitable, reasonable
But it's, it's our implementation of that choice that we don't have anymore. I understand that, but it's very, very difficult. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I just have a comment, or a question, I guess, and not trying to blindside you, but I noticed in reading the sub-things below the seven, that some of those categories were starred with an asterisk, and if I, correct me if I'm right on there or wrong, as my understanding was, those particular items would be based on interviews between evaluator and teacher rather than just any evaluation, you know, a, an observation.
And then
There are, there are items like that.
Yeah, so in the, in the teacher standards, the teaching standards, there are several items that, like you said, they have an asterisk next to them, and for those items, they might be things like follows policies and procedures of the district, or things like that, that can't be observed by me just standing and sitting in your classroom. So, it's, it's the entire system. It covers that stuff, and it covers the teaching.
And I, and I think often of professional development that teachers participate in, other than our district professional development, they go to a conference or something, that the principal may not know that if you don't sit down and interview the teacher. So, I think that's really important, the consistency between evaluators, I think will, if we can make that happen, will eliminate a lot of concern among staff. I taught here long enough to know, and, you know, if I had so-and-so's an evaluator, everything would have been wonderful.
Yeah.
And I got so-and-so's an evaluator, and now I've got these problems.
Yeah.
That's a concern, always has been, and so, building that consistency in, I think, is a really super plus for this. The whole thing about the student data, I concur with Mr. Morrison on that. I know that's a very tough nut, and I think as we talk to the public, especially with the discussion of transfers and so forth, education is not running a business. You know, we don't get to choose our students as a teacher, and if you just go on broad data, some teachers are going to look better than others just because of the kids they got in their class. So, you've got a tough job to work on that growth component. And I think as we talk with the public, we can focus on the growth that is happening with your children, no matter where they are, and I think most teachers will be not particularly happy, but they'll be comfortable with that, that they can make that difference happen. Instead of, you know, I get a kid that comes in two years behind on reading, I move him up a year and a half, he's still a half year behind, so I'll cut off their head because they're not on level. And that's And that's awful, and I really don't want to see that happen, okay?
You're, no, you're exactly right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the committee, we fully agree with that.
It's, it's, it's a big concern, and I'm not sure the public is always aware of these difficulties that you wrestle with in our business. But thank you so much for what you've done, and the trust that you've built is really critical, because we need that to make it all happen.
Do you have any further questions?
Um, a couple of quick ones, hopefully. One is, can you talk a little bit, pardon me if I missed it, but can you talk a little bit about the potential rollout? Would this go to every school, every teacher right off the bat, or would you use some sort of sample worth going?
So, we do have a rollout, can we? Um, we actually are starting professional development on this pending your approval immediately, because there's a ton to be done before the end of this year. So, this would start at all schools at the beginning of next year, and all the professional development we have planned, the teacher leader training starts, and then there are five sessions for secondary schools, and then five sessions for elementary schools for teachers to have an introduction, and then there'll be another session for them during a week of next year. And then, there are four different components, though. There are the unit of instruction-
Sorry, for the crowd, a week?
Um, orientation week at the beginning of school next year. And then, there are different components of the system, though. There's the unit instruction, there's the professional growth plan, and then there are the observations, and the committee hasn't yet determined how we're going to roll those out. It's not necessary to implement all three the first year. I think it might be best to start with one component and then gradually add in.
And presumably, there, so there would be training and then rollout of whichever portions you all seek. Um, and then, I, I assume there would be some sort of check-in, and we've rolled it out, it's six weeks in, and now feedback, how's it going, that sort of thing, that would be working as a plan. Um, and then, we talked about the cost, but, um, is there some cost analysis that exists in terms of, um, because we've talked about raw cost of this, but like, just as we talked about something earlier, the graduation, um, how does it compare, because there's going to be a cost savings because we're going to stop something else? And, again, pardon me if I, if I missed it.
Oh, it's okay.
Right now, Mr. Martinez, we do not spend a lot of training and development dollars on our teacher evaluation system that has been in place for quite some time. So, this is an additional cost. It is a great investment, because we believe it's going to impact teacher development, which will impact student achievement.
Sure.
So, the, the cost, we're happy to say can come out of our Title II funds, which is not directly out of the district operating budget. Um, so, right now, those targeted costs will come out of Title II.
Sure, and then just for everybody, coming out of Title II, does that mean that they come away from some other endeavor? Spending those Title II funds on this, does it mean that we can't spend some, something on something else?
We typically have a lot of carryover with our Title II funds, so we don't typically spend on it.
Thanks. Sorry to involve you.
No, no, great questions, great, awesome, great questions.
Any further questions? All those in favor of accepting the, uh, network educator effectiveness? Teacher evaluation system, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. There you go.
Thank you, Board of Education, and I would truly like to thank Kelly, Ross, and Lori Sandelman for their presentation tonight and their leadership, and I would also like to recognize the other committee members that are here this evening. Sandra McDougal, Cynthia Wise, Susan Kelly, Dr. Glenn Diggs, I know that you all are here, so if you will please stand, and thank you very much. And thank you again.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, you have the next three items. If you can kind of go through all three and we'll vote on them separately.
Okay.
How's that?
It's perfectly fine. So, the district is seeking E-rate funding for cellular services. The Technology Services Department received bids applied cellular. T-Mobile was selected as the low bidder, and the board members are seeing it as some way to bid. So, in the case of E-rate, this is money that we filed for that offsets the cost of internet and phone services, and we just go through their process and get those, and that's how we arrive at this. Uh, and again, T-Mobile is the, was a low bidder. So, in this case, we're seeking Board of Education approval for T-Mobile to provide cellular service for the district for 2014-15, and I have a total non-discounted estimated, estimated cost of six thousand dollars a month. It's actually inflated, if you look at the numbers, I had a discussion earlier, but we try to file above what we potentially need. You can always actually pass it lower, but you can never ask for more once you file for this, this funding.
I move aye, Seth.
Aye, good. Uh, done motion by Ms. Hogshead to accept the E-rate for cellular service, seconded by Mr., what's his name down there? Ebert, Ebert. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. The district is seeking E-rate funding for paging services. American Messaging was the sole bidder, and the board has received a copy of the bid. In this case, we're seeking Board of Education approval for American Messaging to provide paging service for 2014-15, a total estimated non-discounted cost of about five hundred sixty-three dollars a month.
I move aye.
It's been moved by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Mr. Brown to accept E-rate paging services. All those in favor, any discussion?
We're still paging people?
Yes.
Okay. Because they need communications and it's cheaper than giving them a phone.
Yeah, our, our pager numbers are, are smaller, but the, the cost to the district is really low. It's less than a dollar a month per pager.
How many page?
Uh, it's around fifty, I believe. It's primarily used by facilities, here if you're in our department.
And you talked about a non-discounted cost, what is the discount that we receive on E-rate?
So, in the case of what we're talking about here is the overall discount, and it's calculated based on free and reduced lunch numbers. And so, if we get the funding, then we pay approximately twenty percent.
Okay.
So, we're getting back eighty percent. But in the case of these things that are utilities, we budget for it and pay for it, and then we go back and get reimbursements.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. Now you got pagers.
So, the district is seeking E-rate funding for network switches. Worldwide technology was a low bidder for system equipment, the board has received a copy of the bids. In this case, we're seeking Board of Education approval for worldwide technology to provide switches. In this case, only if E-rate funding is approved, and that total estimated cost before discount, uh, excuse me, this is, it should be two-point-five million, this is actually our after-discount number at the bottom there. So, the potential cost to the district is about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
So, this, this particular one is, um, sorry, I need a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Ms. Ebert. So, this particular one is, is only if we get the E-rate?
Correct.
For this particular item.
And so, different than utilities, in this case, this is hardware, and it's a different type of E-rate funding called Priority Two, and so, in this case, we would wait until we're sure that we're getting the funding, so we don't incur this two-point-five million-dollar bill, and then, once we get that funding commitment, we would proceed with the purchase.
And have we gotten this in the past?
Actually, we have gotten, for hardware, we had our buildings rewired, which actually is under the same Priority Two. Our ninety percent schools were rewired a couple of years ago, and we've gotten switches in the past for Priority Two. Typically, you will get this funding only if your school is what they call ninety percent, which is a higher free and reduced percentage, but many of our buildings at this moment stand at that ninety percent. Anything lower than that, chances are you will not get that funding.
Any further discussion?
Well, and I'm clearing that done, so this is going to be building by building, and some buildings will get them and some buildings won't?
That's exactly correct. So, in this case, it's, it's how we approach the wiring as well, where we would break out by building the number of switches and actually file separately, so that the higher discounted schools would be filed together and the lower discounted schools filed together, and that streamlines the process, then you get that ninety percent funding commitment, and you may never get eighty percent. And then, in that case, we would put switches into those locations, you know, this is assuming that the district would have that capital money to put towards the ten percent, but we also would have the advantage, whatever switches go in, there are various switches that are better in locations, so if we were to replace switches in, say, a ninety percent school, we could pick and choose better switches to put in other locations in the district.
So, when we replace them, we keep ownership of the old switches?
That's, that's absolutely correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on switches? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. Now you got switches, hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Laura Madruzy, January fourteenth Annual Audit Report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The annual audit of the district's financial operation for 2013 has been completed by the Certified Public Accounting Firm, Shaw Alter and G. Bori. This is the firm's first year in auditing our district. A copy of the audit has been given to the board. Mr. James Torry, who is a Certified Public Accountant, a Certified Prior Examiner, and the President of Shaw Alter and G. Bori, will present an overview of the audit.
Good evening, thanks for reminding me here tonight, uh, I, you know, I know you've received reports, all the reports resulted from the audit in your packet, I want to just spend a few minutes to talk about each one of those. The first one is your financial statements. Those are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. On page one of the financial statements, you'll find our independent auditor's report. In that report, we give our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. With regard to federal and state reporting, we did note instances of deficiencies in internal control or financial reporting that we were hired to report, however, we noted no instances of non-compliance that we are required to report in connection with your federal warrants programs. With regard to the June thirtieth, 2013, fund balances and other financial highlights, the district ended the year with a total fund balance of approximately thirty-one-point-eight million dollars. In the operating funds, which are the general and special revenue funds, the total fund balance was seventeen-point-four million dollars. Of that amount, approximately fifteen-point-four million is unassigned or unreserved. This represents approximately thirteen-point-four percent of the 2013 expenditures in those funds. And the operating funds had a decrease in fund balance of approximately seven-point-six million dollars for the year, and the originally, uh, adopted budget for 2014 is estimated a deficit of approximately one-point-five million dollars. In addition to the audit report, we also issued a report on internal control-related matters, advisory comments, and other matters. In this report, we reported to the board the deficiencies in internal control that we noted, along with other suggestions for improving internal control and operating efficiency. And management has included their responses to each of our comments, and in addition, we provided an update, uh, as to the status of the prior year comments. Finally, we, uh, issued a report titled Report to the Board of Education, which includes required communications with those charged with governance at the conclusion of an audit, and it includes the adjusting journal entries that were noted as a result of the audit and posted to the district's books and records. I would like to thank Ms. Madruzy and her staff for the many courtesies extended to us during our audit, and at this time, I would be happy to, uh, answer any questions that the board may have.
I need a motion to accept the, uh, annual audit report.
Thank you.
The move by Mr. Chabot, seconded by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion, any questions?
It was some good reading. I, I did go through it, um, over the last couple of days, but apparently it's not accessed anymore, I don't know, but, um, I didn't find anything that... I was looking for the clip notes in there, so it didn't lie.
Any, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the annual audit report, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quarterly budget update.
You again.
Okay, um, tonight's presentation is an update at, um, of the second quarter of our financial, of our district's financial picture. I will start with a review of our revenue sources, um, and I just kind of wanted to give everybody a brief overview of the, the most revenue that we receive is from our local funds. We get fifty-five percent of our funds from current taxes, um, thirty-six percent of our funds come from our state revenue, eight percent of our funds come from, um, the county, or from the federal revenue, and one percent of our funds do come from, um, the county revenue. We have received our final assessment from the county, and, um, I wanted to compare it to last year's final assessment. We usually, we typically get those numbers in December thirty-first, and so, as you can see, from two thousand, from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, we, we did have a reassessment here in two thousand thirteen, and our assessment did drop by thirty-nine million dollars. So, I wanted to, to kind of bring that to a regular person's perspective and what that means to the district. I, if we took the assessment from two thousand twelve and we multiplied it out by our, um, the tax rate, which is the same tax levy as we have for this year, we should receive forty-seven million dollars. As of January thirty-first of two thousand thirteen, we have received thirty-eight million dollars, or that was eighty-two percent of the funds that we were to perceive, and at the end of the year, at June thirtieth, we've received forty-three-point-nine million dollars, or, or ninety-four percent. So, looking at this year, same tax rate, we should receive forty-five million dollars. The total that we've received as of January thirty-first was thirty-six million, which was eighty-one percent, which is roughly about the same amount that we received, the same percentage that we received last year. So, the total anticipated revenue would be forty-two-point-three million dollars if we took it at a ninety-four percent collection rate. We never get one-hundred percent of a collection. Um, the FY thirteen-fourteen budget was forty-three-point-four, so we're not going to receive as much revenue as, as I anticipated earlier in the year, before, in June. I also wanted to give you an over, a look, overview of the assessed valuation history of our district. I looked, I took the last five years and put them on the graph so that you could see our assess, assessment has dropped, and over the past five years, it's dropped by a hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars. So, if we took, so I did the same thing with our revenue then, and I did a revenue comparison, so over the past five years, we have lost close to four million dollars in just our county revenue alone. I also took some of our other revenue and compared it to where we received last year just to see if we were coming in on the same. Um, delinquent tax, taxes, the good news is, we've already received two million dollars, and I only budgeted one-point-two million this year, because last year, Boeing had a, um, protested their taxes, and so, they took money away from us in our delinquent taxes. We are back up to the two-million mark, um, in the past, we have received two million dollars, so thankfully, we're back up to that mark again. Surcharge, we've only received six-point-three million, which is less than we received at this time last year, but I do anticipate that we should receive the ten-point-two million that we believe that we'll get. Prop C taxes, the other good news, that's our sales tax, and, um, as of October in Missouri, the sales tax has been up by three percent, so that's good news for all school districts in the state of Missouri. Um, we've already received five-point-eight million dollars as opposed to the five-point-six that we received this time last year. Food service is coming in about the same, even though we did increase the school lunches, I'm thinking that maybe we have more students on the free and reduced, and so, that money's not, it's coming in less, a little bit less than last year, but I do believe we'll meet our target. Um, the student activity is also coming in a little bit less, and our homeless transportation is also coming in about twenty-four thousand dollars, less than the same time that, last year, and that's a whole bill, you know, that, that money comes in as we bill them, so I'm not quite sure where we are with that. County tax is another source of revenue that we receive. We've already received all of the fines and forfeitures, that's whenever the trucks go through the weigh stations and they get fines, um, so they must've had a bad year this year. We've actually received two-hundred-and-twenty thousand as opposed to the one-hundred-and-fifty last year that we received, so we are going to receive more than I budgeted in that. We have not received our total- We have not received our total state assessed utilities. That is, those are the taxes on the electricity that goes to the wires, the oil that goes through the pipelines and things like that. The state does believe that we should receive more of the tax this year, so I do believe that we will receive our targeted amount of the budget. State revenue, basic formula and classroom trust kind of are one in the same. We get that as two separate line items, but the more classroom trust money we get, the less basic formula money we get. The classroom trust money is actually the money that we receive from the casinos. And the money that the state allocated at the time of the budget was greater than what the money, because the revenue was really coming in. People must have really got out there and gambled in the spring. So the revenue kind of came up a little bit. And when they set their budget, they set it too high because the revenues at the casinos have been a little bit lower. So I'm not quite sure if we'll meet the four million dollar mark on that. But I'm looking at maybe that we'll receive about five hundred thousand dollars less in that area. And transportation seems to be coming in a little bit lower, but I think that we should be able to meet our budget. So I kind of did the same thing with our state revenue. I took it back for the last five years to show, you know, what the trend has been. As you can see, in oh nine and oh ten, it was a little bit lower, and then it kind of bumped up in eleven, twelve. In those years, the state formula has not been funded. And in those years, in eleven, twelve, I believe that we received a little bit more funding. That was also probably the year of the era money, that we received some money from the federal government. But then again, from eleven, twelve, twelve thirteen, and thirteen fourteen, we're back on that downward trend again with our state aid. So over the past three years, we've lost a revenue of roughly one point four million Our federal revenue is coming in actually pretty good. We did receive some transfer students. And I believe that a lot of those transfer students were eligible for free and reduced, which bumps up our free and reduced lunch money. And breakfast, we bumped up our classroom and the breakfast and the classroom activities. So we are receiving more money in that area. We have a fresh fruits and vegetables program. The revenue's coming in about the same as it did last year. And then in Title I, we also, that's based on our free and reduced percentage, and so we will receive more funding in that this year than the prior year. I also wanted to give you an update on the Normandy River view tuition. To date, we have billed them five hundred, have billed Normandy, five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We've received four hundred and twenty-four. They've paid, there's a schedule that we follow. We bill on a certain date, and then they pay on certain dates. And they have been paying on their scheduled dates. Riverview Gardens has been the same. We've billed one point seven, we've received one point three. We've received, they are following the schedule. They've paid everything that they've paid. There is always a lag from what I billed to when the time is that I've received. So they've been doing a good job till now. And I don't know what's going to happen with Normandy. So the next topic, then, I wanted to kind of look at our expenditures. And again, I wanted to kind of go over where we spend most of our money. Our salaries and benefits make up about eighty-six percent of our total expenditure for the budget. So the salaries are in the red, and the twenty-one percent is the benefits. Eight percent is for purchase services, and seven percent of our expenditures are on material. Now, this is on our operating budget only, it's not including our bond money. So this is just on operating. So when I looked through our expenditures for the year, we're actually doing very good with our expenditures. We are right on target. We're halfway through the year, and we've spent about fifty percent in most all of our categories, except for benefits, which we've not spent as much. And that is because we've done a good job not being sick and holding the line on our insurance costs. And again, I wanted to do a historical trend over the last five years. As you can see, our certified salaries have gone down through the last five years. Our non-certified salaries have kind of remained the same. Our benefits, we've been able to hold, but that is going to change because of the Affordable Healthcare Act. Those will have to start going up in the future. And then we've also been able to kind of reduce some of our purchase service and material expenditures. And as far as this year, we've kind of told everyone to stop spending on just unnecessary items, and if they could only buy what they need, we feel that we can recoup the savings from that also for the remainder of this year. I wanted to kind of talk about the operating fund balances and how important that is to the district at the end of the year. As Mr. Torry explained, at June thirtieth, we had an operating balance of seventeen point four million dollars, which is thirteen point four nine percent of our fund balance. That wasn't enough to get us through the end of the year. All of our revenue comes in in January, and we have to make that last through the whole year. So when it came to November thirtieth, we only had one point seven million dollars left in the bank to pay for payroll, and that wasn't going to cut it because our payroll was obviously more than that. We do start receiving our money in December from the county, so I didn't have to borrow a whole lot. I borrowed three point seven million dollars to get us through so that we could pay our first couple of payrolls. And then we were able to start receiving our county tax revenue. We have repaid that note back. We were able to repay, they wouldn't allow us to pay it back until January. And we repaid it January twenty-first, and the total cost to the district was five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So our fund balances play a very important role. Once we get to the thirteen percent, that's when we're going to have to start borrowing in the fall. So I wanted to, we met with the board earlier, and we had a five-year revenue forecast, and I just wanted to share that again. For thirteen fourteen, our projected revenue would come in at one twenty-one point seven percent. Actually, now that we were receiving that transfer funds, it kind of bumped it up to one twenty-four point four. However, we can't count on that money, you know, because of all the uncertainty with the state. So I took it back out of the budget for the next, you know, five years. And as you can see, our revenue is going to continue to decline if assessed valuation continues to decline like it has been. And if our weighted average daily attendance continues to, and enrollment continues to go down, that also affects our funding. Our expenditures on this particular slide, on the operating expenditures, I left the expenditure status quo. However, I did include the Affordable Healthcare Act costs. And so this is if nothing else happens, if nothing else gets more expensive, that our insurance continues to grow, this is how expenditures will continue to grow in the future. So when you put those two together, our revenue and expenditures, you can see there's going to be quite a gap by eighteen, nineteen. And when there's a gap in your revenue and expenditures, that of course makes your fund balances go down. So by fourteen, fifteen, we will have a deficit of, we won't have enough money to survive if we don't take some action now. So what are our options? Obviously, we have to bounce fourteen, fifteen budget. And that requires budget cuts of six point nine million dollars. Administration did meet with the board, and we suggested six point three million dollars of cuts for consideration. The board has asked us to meet with the NEA and the Strategic Plan Parent Groups and show them our proposed budget cuts, and meet with them and see if they've got suggestions and what they can do to help us with, to cut these budgets, to cut the budget and the costs. And some additional considerations that we really need to take seriously. We are going to recommend to the board for another tax levy increase to be placed on the August sixteenth, two thousand fourteen ballot. We did go to the voters back last August. We asked for seventy-five cents, which would have brought in about seven million dollars in revenue. That would take care of our problem right now, but the public said that's too much. That's, you know, we just can't handle that much right now. So we are going to go suggest that the board approve a fifty cent levy be placed on the ballot in August. And that would bring in four million dollars, which we still have a lot of budget cutting to do, but it would help us not have to cut quite so dramatically. We are also going to recommend a study of our facilities by an ESCO group to determine the needs of our buildings and study what efficiency-saving strategies can be implemented. That's going to be my next agenda item. And results of the studies of the study will be used to determine the possibility of April two fifteen, five election, because we will be running out of bond money next year. Are there any questions from the board?
This is for information only. This is information only, so as does require. Go ahead.
I want to just thank you. I know these presentations are very difficult, and I've known you could lose sleep and stress out really about the financial picture of our district. So thank you very much. I just, it goes to show that, you know, even with the cuts that we're going to have to make and, you know, passing of this tax levy is going to be absolutely critical for this district. You know, with the last one that failed, you know, the ripple effect is going to be felt this next coming school year. There's just no way around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think anyone who supports the district is going to have to support that tax levy and probably should have supported the last one, but...
You wasted money. You've been wasted money. Oh, Jesus.
We support this superintendent.
Two questions.
Wasted money.
Five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars that was spent in interest costs, essentially. How does that compare to what would have been earned had we had that amount in our reserves?
Right now, we're making about not even a dollar on our interest rate. And so it really, with the interest, we're not making much money at all. You know, in fact, that's been a big revenue loss, too. When I very first started doing the interest, we were making over a million dollars in interest, and now we're making about fifty thousand. So in the scheme of interest earned or lost, it's not that great. But what's going to happen is that has reduced how much money we've got now for the next year. So we're going to have to borrow earlier next year.
Okay. In the delta between the expenses and the revenue, did the expenses also take into consideration the reduction in student body, which would obviously have a reduction in staff?
Right. I did not increase expenses except for insurance. So that's just if we can hold our expenses, you know, there's not a reduction, but everything always costs more, so kind of even that. You're always going to have a CPI of two or three percent in the next future. So I did take that into consideration because we will be losing expenses, probably if we don't have the students that we have.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Can I just clarify? If I'm right, is twenty fifteen a reassessment year then?
That's correct.
They reassess in odd years?
Yes.
So, you know, I've been around a long time, and I know in these situations, you say, this is going to keep going down, and this is going to keep going up. The problem is, we can't predict. It's probably not going to keep going down.
Right.
And so you're doing the right thing? You're presenting us with the worst-case scenario?
That's correct.
Okay. And now the hard part is trying to balance of, well, where is reality really going to be? And that's, we need some crystal balls.
Right.
But the drop in assessed valuation is very difficult, and we're really not going to get any relief from that until the fifteen, sixteen school year then, is that right?
Possibly.
Or is it a reassessment after fifteen?
Right, exactly. Exactly. So if the economy turns around and some of the foreclosed homes are sold, that's part of the problem with the drop in assessment is the foreclosed homes. And so if we can get those filled with taxpayers, that would be great.
Right, right. But again, we're not going to, I'm just trying to get our timeframe here. That drop in assessment is probably reality until twenty fifteen.
That's correct.
Because it's not going to change between now and then, because we don't reassess.
Right.
And then the only other thing is student enrollment.
Correct.
How is that going to affect, and that's a very tough call, too. I know, I don't know whose office does it, but they're pretty good about predicting what's going to happen.
And right now, the enrollment trend is still going down.
Right, right.
Unless we can get some people with children in those homes.
Right. I understand. If you want me to move, I understand.
Bring your grandkids in.
My grandkids are out of town. I went to Kansas City this weekend to see my grandkids. No, but thank you. I think it's very important to understand that we're looking at worst-case scenario.
That's correct.
And I've got to figure out what can we live with in terms of risk. And thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know you work very hard to make this happen.
With the projections that you've given us, at what, first of all, at what percentage of reserves do the state, this state kick in?
It's at two percent.
Where, what year would we meet that on your projection? Did you say two percent?
Two percent. That would be in fourteen, well, I'm sorry, fifteen, sixteen is when it drops below the line. We still have six percent at fourteen, fifteen. Now, you know, this, and again, this is worst-case scenario.
Sure.
And if we can continue with our budget cuts, or if we can bring in some additional revenue, that will certainly help the problem.
Any further budget questions? Seeing none, let's move on to facility study.
As the district's strategic plan moves forward, administration would like to conduct an evaluation of our facilities to determine the needs for our buildings. We would also like to determine what modifications are needed in order for them to be more energy and operational efficient, which will help the district with our cost savings. I will turn this discussion over to Terry O'Neil, who will discuss the steps we would like to take to proceed with this plan.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Hogg. Our facilities renovation RFQ is based on revised Murray, Missouri, state statute eight point two three one. It's an innovative legislative tool that provides local government units with an optional method of implementing and funding comprehensive renovations of infrastructure paid from savings using ECM, which are energy conservation measures. The driving force of this legislation is the use of what are called ESCOs, or energy service companies. These are considered a guaranteed energy conservation contract that you make with them. An ESCO specializes in facility renovations and additions, energy and operational efficiencies, implementation using the design-build method, which is a quicker and time-saving process. This is the only way a school district can use that type of method for procurement. The goal is to reduce operation costs and eliminate deferred maintenance and find energy efficiencies in our schools. As you see, there's a fixed cost, and there's no obligation fee. During our evaluation, development of plans and projects, there are no engineering or architectural fees, which we normally would have. The ESCOs take the financial risk while evaluating and developing our plan. These projects are funded through leveraging low-cost capital and using our bonding capital funds, energy efficiency savings, energy rebates, and other energy and efficiency financial The approach they use, they are not contractors, they're not architects, they're not engineers. They have no particular product to promote. Their whole job is to strictly work with the district to develop a customized solution to meet our specific and unique needs. The important part is the cost is fixed. Once it's set for a project, it is set, period. The ESCOs take the risk once a price is set for a project. If it goes over, it's their money, not ours. There's no change orders, which is really important to us. Change orders cause the cost of project to increase, it delays the project, and it changes our scope of work. It's costly and time-consuming. One of the nice things about this is subcontractors and vendors, once a district secures an ESCO through the competitive bid, our obligation for bidding is complete. The ESCO then develops a district-approved scope of work. They solicit bids using pre-qualified local trades. And this will save the district time and money, it frees up our staff for other responsibilities. Also, the ESCOs will consider any district recommendation for use of under our value local vendors, subcontractors that we have used and would like to use again. If the board so chooses to pursue a bond issue, an ESCO will have the experience to create a comprehensive plan and assist us with that bond issue campaign, helps with passing that bond issue. So our next steps, we will need to contract with an ESCO to complete the facilities evaluation and develop a implement and comprehensive plan. We have prepared an RFQ for this purpose already, and fortunately, there are numerous ESCOs out there that can submit those qualifications to us. So tonight, we are asking that you approve us to move forward on advertising the facilities renovation RFQ. Any questions?
Need a motion?
Still moved.
Sorry. And moved by Ms. Hogshead, and second by Mr. Ebert, that we go ahead with an ESCO RFQ. Any discussion?
My question is, from Laura's presentation, we're anticipating a bond issue on April fifteenth?
Yes.
Or, I mean, is Terry, are you in the same wavelength? Or, I mean, is Terry, are you in the same wavelength with this we're talking about?
I'm both with her.
Okay, so we're aiming for a bond issue in 2015?
Yes. Our bond funds actually run out at the end of 15.
Right.
I remember the last tax, I remember the last bond issue thing. And what's the cause for this upfront on engaging these people to get started down this road?
There is no upfront cost. The costs come when we actually select our projects that we'll do, and they get a portion of that project. And again, the nice part about that is they do get a portion of the project, but once we lock in the cost, it's their cost. And if we go over, it's their money.
And so just as a general information for the public, as much as us, do you have any faint ideas of possible projects that we might anticipate? I'm thinking of the project that I know I got involved with at the Green Committee that no one knows about, replacing all the lousy light bulbs, all right? And that should be saving us some money. But nobody knows that happened because you walk in, you turn on the lights, and lights are still there. But you're only burning thirty-two watts instead of forty every time they're on. So just as a general, do you have some kind of a general idea of the projects you might be anticipating?
Actually, we were fortunate, one of the ESCOs, Amoresco, you may have heard of that name, they've been before you before. They started doing the preliminary evaluation through a memorandum of understanding. So there was no cost, again, to the district for them to do that. They get some preliminary responses, and as you know, we brought some of those forward as far as windows, air conditioning units to replace window units and things like that. They actually have provided us with a preliminary list of over eighty million dollars of projects that would improve our schools not only just energy efficiency, but also operational efficiency and ADA and safety. So that's the idea, what, where they will head. They'll do a more detailed study because they didn't do this very preliminary, and they'll have a lot better ideas and better cost for us once they are under contract.
Thank you very much. The energy savings, how much of that do you anticipate would pay for the project?
They look for that. There's energy saving deficiencies for certain projects and others there won't be. It'll be more for operational savings. But they generally look for that to be the largest part of your payment, probably seventy percent or so. Like our lighting projects, the energy savings was estimated to pay for that completely. With, and that's what we're anticipating this time.
What's the payback time?
On the lighting one, it's fifteen years. And with these, that will depend on when they make the recommendations for these. They will tell us the cost and the payback period.
And then Amoresco gave us eighty million dollars. Our bonding capacity, if I'm not wrong, is about one hundred and twenty million at this point, is that correct? And if we borrow, if we sell thirty million dollars to the bonds, and the next thing, that takes us down to ninety million. So that pretty much taps us out as far as that's concerned. I know that there is a proposal in Missouri Legislature to increase the amount that we can bond, is that correct?
And they will make a recommendation based on whatever bond size is selected by the board. I know at one time, they came forward with a number that we were looking at windows and air conditioners based on what the board had asked for. And so that's the thing, they will make recommendations, they'll prioritize, and they'll also listen to recommendations of the district and the board.
Any further questions? Everybody in favor of presenting a RFQ for ESCOs? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Very good. Ms. Martina, one more time.
We're not done with the yet. One final statement. In my quarterly financial report, I discussed the six point three million dollars of budget cuts that were presented to the board. And within those cuts are five positions that administration is recommending to not fill. We are aware that if the ESIP is not approved, several of these employees will rescind their retirement. So administration also believes that if the deadline is extended, additional staff members may take advantage of this ESIP because of the changes that will occur through the budget reductions. At this time, the ESIP will, at this time, right now, the ESIP will produce a savings of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the district through the turnover savings and the elimination of the five positions. Administration is recommending an extension of the ESIP deadline to April 30th, and we're asking if you could lift the minimum of forty employees to take the ESIP requirement.
I need a motion.
Oh, no.
Second.
A move by Mr. Ebert, seconded by Mr. Martinez. Discussion, the question I have is, I thought that April 1st was our deadline to notify teachers if they're going to be rehired. This would extend this to April 30th?
April 15th is the Missouri statute. We need to notify non-tenure teachers and tenure staff who need to notify them. So we still have the April 15th deadline as required by law.
So this April 30th, does it interfere with that?
No, it doesn't. We need to give our employees at least forty-five days to consider the proposal and decide if we recommend it after they submit their paperwork. So if there is a deadline, we'll just need to work out.
Any more questions?
Yeah, just one. Why was there a forty employee requirement to begin with?
That was probably me.
That was Paul Morris.
Me.
That wasn't mine.
From the days of Ron Moran, when he did not want to do ERT, because he was counting on a certain amount retiring regardless. And in order to make it beneficial, you needed to have a larger pool than normally would retire.
Well, that's kind of my question, is the math different?
No. Well, it's not, but in order to achieve the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars savings, several of the people that are on the retirement list will not retire. And I know that for a fact, because two of them are my own people. So then they said to me, I've put in for retirement, that I will rescind it if this doesn't happen.
The idea is not to have twenty people retire that retire anyway, and we have to pay them. So, so that's.
There are several others in that same situation.
And if we backed out at this point, then we would lose that savings. But at least now, we've got enough to have a sizable savings.
Right.
That was the goal.
Exactly. We're trying to achieve the goal, and eight hundred and fifty thousand is a pretty good savings.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify my thinking, so if we remove the forty employment requirement, that means everybody that has applied will retire.
Correct. That is correct.
That's a given deal.
We've had thirty-two already take out.
Right. But I'm saying, those thirty-two won't have any uncertainty anymore.
That's correct.
Right now, they've put in and they're not sure what's going to happen or not.
That's correct.
If we pass this tonight, they know they'll retire.
That's absolutely correct.
And that eliminates all that uncertainty for them.
Right. And also, we can move forward with our discussions on our budget cuts.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Hey, Board Governance, Policy 4041.
Good evening again. Missouri Revised Statute 610.015 allows members of public governmental bodies to cast roll call votes in a meeting if the member is participating via video conferencing. Language-allowing video conferencing is being presented in four board policies this evening. The first one is Policy 4041, Board Policy Process. The Board of Education received these items in the board packet. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the revised language. I will read the statement that is being recommended to be inserted into the policy, and the language is verbatim in each of the four policies that I speak to this evening. Board members not physically present may participate in a roll call vote, as well as other votes, if participating by video conferencing, which does not include teleconferencing. And this is for board information only tonight. As a first reading, we will bring the board policies back next month for our final second reading for approval.
And this is the same language in all four policies, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we don't need to go through each board policies so much. So any questions? It's just a first reading.
Right. But just to clarify, for those of you who's not technical, what's the difference between the video conferencing and teleconferencing? Is it specifically, does that include teleconferencing?
That is correct, and that's why we're a technology expert.
Thank you.
I had that set up already.
So those things were born before 1950. They're like the.
Telephone video, video, so physically you can see the person who's participating rather than just hearing their voice.
Okay. So that's why the teleconferencing is excluded, because there would be only voice.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The second policy is Policy 4044, Suspension of Policies and Bylaws. And again, the same language would be inserted in there. The third policy is Policy 4054, Board Meeting Agenda. And the last item is Policy 4058, Parliamentary Procedure.
Very good. I don't see any further discussion. We'll look forward to that next month. Mr. O'Neil, Ms. LaRue, City of Cool Valley and Ferguson Forest School District, Five Star and Urban Water Restoration Grant Partnership.
This information was shared with the board just to gauge interest. There are communications occurred between the City of Cool Valley and Ferguson Forest concerning a piece of land right there by Cool Valley on Ferguson Road as far as improvements to it. And Terry has reviewed the land over a period of time, communications with the City of Cool Valley, and that's the reason for the recommendation. With that grant, that date has passed, but we at least gave them a letter informing them that it needed to come to the board because it's about the property, that we couldn't make any kind of commitment. But that letter has been issued, and we're here to just answer any questions as a follow-up, if you have.
I need a motion to accept the proposal for the. The move by Mr. Martinez and seconded by Mrs. Hoggseth to enter into the Water Restoration Grant Partnership. Any further discussion?
Well, only to sort of reiterate that there were a number of questions primarily focused around safety, cleanup, and obviously, the administration did a good job of digging into all of that information for us and made the board feel comfortable, I think, at least me. Certainly, that the safety will be obviously paramount in that project, and that's part of what the project is about, including the entire board.
I mean, I think maybe an important thing to highlight is that we would retain ownership of the property. The safety and security and maintenance would be the responsibility of the City of Cool Valley, including their Police Department. We, as, they include a natural or man-made barrier to separate it from the school to keep our students and staff safe. And that we also talked to the art tech engineer, and they're open to input for the design. They had some play fields, and we were making some recommendations to possibly add some rain gardens for educational purposes and for rental purposes. Ms. Martinez brought the issue of the water quality, and that, of course, is part of the grant will be tested. From my experience at the City of Ferguson with some of the water quality in the creek area, it has done well in the past, and there's been some things done with GNR to make sure it is cleaned up and kept that way. So I think that it will come out well, that they will test to be sure. And so, and of course, the biggest benefit, I think, of all the partnership is the educational part. I think that'd be very advantageous for our students. It's over there at Cadley and Little Creek nature area staff, and that will be something they could really coordinate for us and make it a really positive item for the project.
Tracy Jeffries is here by chance.
Yes. Yes, she is.
Right. She's worked very closely advising us through this process. And so certainly, thank you for helping.
Just one question. As we retain ownership of the property, what does that do as far as liability for injury or accident to the public that are using it?
That would all have to be part of the legal agreement with the city, and that's why they're taking on responsibility, safety, security, and maintenance. So it would not be our responsibility.
Okay. That's important. Thank you.
The scale of the land or the nature of that property right now invites some concerns, and those have been expressed.
I think the city has expressed that there is some problems in that area. It's a good, to be blunt, a hiding place. It's a wooded area with a creek that we don't use in any way at this time. It's just a wooded area in front of the school, blocked from seeing the school. And so, I mean, it could be. Fair enough.
Very good. All in favor of going into the partnership? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? There you go. Most carries. And finally, the last agenda item this evening. Suggestions and/or questions. A maximum of fifteen minutes is provided for suggestions and/or questions from members of the audience. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board, or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and limit their remarks to three minutes. In keeping with District Policy 4059 and Personnel Law, speakers should refrain from making negative remarks that are personally identifiable. To comply with Missouri Sunshine Law and District Policy 4054 and 4059, board members will not respond to comments made during the public comment period. Subject of public comments will be noted in amendments and appropriately addressed by the district. Ms. Ebert.
My name is Archilla Buford, and I'm a parent of the district. I have three suggestions, one statement, and one question. I will begin with the suggestion that, and this will, I guess, be considered a first reading or a first suggestion that I hope will be considered, or we will continue to talk about it. I'm proposing that we move the board reading to a Friday evening possibly so that we can get more participation from parents and community individuals. This will allow parents to not have to be away from their children, not being able to assist them with their academics for over three hours or more on an evening. So that is one suggestion. I also suggest that we possibly reduce the items that are on the agenda so that it will allow, and that we will adjust how we currently allow individuals to ask questions, which is prior to the meeting or the actual items to be discussed. I know what was being proposed earlier this evening, that we would call and possibly get materials, but realistically, we all know that that would be a logistical nightmare. So I would like to suggest that. I. My question, I know you will not respond to it, is about Dr. McCoy in regards to the closed meeting date. Is there any particular reason why that, the time of that closed meeting has not been disclosed to the individuals of this district? It has been rumored, and I don't like to really deal with rumors, but it has been rumored that Dr. McCoy received notification of this closed meeting the same way many of us were made aware of it, which was through the news. And I really hope that that is not the case in which how we would operate in this district. And I think, lastly, the statement that I want to make is in regards to, given what has been said about our budget circumstances, I believe would be in the best interest of this board once again to carefully think through the decisions that you're planning to make at that closed meeting. Even though I know it has been indicated that we were given the worst-case scenario, I personally believe that, yes, we can rebound from this, that we can actually move forward and try. and try to bring the community together if the right decision is made going forward. But if possibly, if the wrong decision is made, I think we can put the nail in the coffin.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Benz and I am not only a candidate for the school board, but I'm also a parent and taxpayer. And so, I'm sure many of you are fully expecting me to address the tax levy issue that we're considering in August. I have not been shy to share that I do not support the seventy-five cent tax levy and the main reason was because it was such a high tax levy with such a short period of time to, for the public to answer questions and actually know what's going on in our, in our district's budget. I would highly suggest that that PowerPoint that was up there when it came to the actual charts be posted on our website so the community can see what the projections are and maybe we can all have a better understanding as to the state of the current revenue that the district is receiving. I would also like to point out that you guys have been on here for three years, Mrs. Hogshead, you've been on here for twenty some odd, I'm not exactly sure, ten, two, eight, one, five, or two. You guys get this, it's a quarterly budget update. You guys get this quarterly, you not only get it quarterly, but that budget or that close projections right there, you at least get once a year. This economy has been on a downturn for ten years. Why have you guys not prepared ahead of time to, so that we weren't in the situation where we're asking for such a large increase at one time? And secondly, and then I'll give off to the other participants in the audience, but secondly, I will say right now and put on the record that if going to the community and you actually talk to the community and see if a fifty cent increase is something that they can afford and it's definitely something that we need and they understand that, I think that the community would be a lot more willing to give that to the district. But we need to communicate to the district and we need to have community confidence in our district. And that's right there, but I'm gonna be running on and I'll be ready for the March sixth forum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Liberna Hitchens and I would like to speak to the board to consider how citizens, students, and just the community in general is feeling at this time. I think you need to hear that, you're our board. And this meeting has been quite informative, I like information, but I think it's important that you all hear from us in terms of how we're feeling about other things that you didn't really mention as much in this meeting. I'd like to kind of state a, two quotes before I just give my comments real quickly. The first one is by Margaret Neede. And Margaret Neede says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." I'd like you to just think about that. The other quote is from a Harvard professor, Harold Howe the second, Harvard professor. "The learning young people acquire in families, communities, and a variety of other settings is as important a part of their education as the learning that takes place in school." As I stand before you this evening, I'd like to tell you very clearly that you have a committed, thoughtful, committed group of citizens who are here tonight and some are not here. We are very upset about the horrible injustice that you have imposed on this community and imposed on Dr. Art McCoy. As a statement from Harvard professor Howe says, "Young people acquire learning through families, communities, and other settings." And they're acquiring some learning from what has happened with this board and this community. This community cannot, and I repeat, cannot allow this board to take such unjust, mean-spirited actions without speaking up and speaking out about what's really going on here. We owe it to our young people who can learn from this situation, which is negatively affecting their lives. This board has stated on several occasions that you care about our students and you want what's best for them. You've also said you want what's best for this community. I don't know how you can think we can believe that. You're attempting to fire Dr. McCoy, who has and still has the best interest of this community, the students, and the district. Yes. Your actions give us no reason to believe anything other than you really don't care because we believe things could have been worked out. Again, no for sure, this community will knock back down for this injustice, whether through voting, further community mobilization, and any other means available. We will speak up and we will stand up for what's right and what has been done is not wrong. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amelia Schultz, I'm a parent in the district. And I'd like to address the number of snow days we've had this year. Now, I admit, I am from the north and people don't race to the store to buy bread as soon as someone says, "Snow there." So, I struggle with, as far, where I came from, we maybe had three snow days. But, I would like to suggest that the district really needs to research late start and early dismissal. There are several snow days, well, the snow day, last Tuesday, that definitely could have been an early dismissal. We could have had at least a good half-day of school and then let the kids go home. And late starts, sometimes we do have, it's messy in the morning, but if we could just have two hours, two-hour delay, that would get a lot of the slush off, warm up, and we'd be able to get the kids in school and not have so many days that were packed. In fact, on other school districts do this, if you do it in a staggered timeframe, it'll still work with buses. Because I know at some point that's been, I've been told it's the busing thing, but if you had two-hour delay, then every school's starting two hours later and that's still the same frame of busing schedule that it would be on a normal day. So, I just think that this is something, I know this has been an unusual year, but we should have that in our handbook, because this is what happens if there's a late start, everything is two-hour later. If we say it's a snow day, or if we say it's an early dismissal, high school is dismissed at eleven and elementary's dismissed at twelve-thirty or something. I just think that needs to be reviewed because this year has been, we've just had a horrendous number of days. Thank you.
Hello, Board of Education, my name is Doris Graham, former board member for twenty-three years, proud to say that everywhere. I have three simple things. Number one, I was doing what we used to do, the National School Board Association, go Capitol Hill and talk to our elected officials. Well, I did that Sunday until I came home today, talked on behalf of the Community College where I serve as vice chair of the trustee board for the St. Louis Community College District. And number one, I want to tell you that I came home a day early because of the projected snowstorm that would be hitting Washington DC sometime tonight, tomorrow. And I was so glad I came back home, got to see Senator Roy, and he said, "Tell this board hello." With a smile on his face, hello. And I said, "I will do that." Because now I have a chance to go to the board meeting that I thought I was gonna miss and I didn't think I would have a chance to go out here and just, and just rally with the rest of the people, say, "Oh, we want Dr. Art McCoy back, I knew you weren't gonna talk about it because, you know, I can still go board." And I, we had a wonderful weekend before I left and I was just saying, "I don't feel no waste time." And I just did a whole lot of things, but it, you know what? By me saying it, I was so energized that I kept that same spirit all the way up to DC and all the way back. And, you know, I'm not tired, my husband's birthday was yesterday and I missed it. And I should have been with him tonight, but I'm here because I am not tired at all and I went to see our Ferguson, Florist and School District back on the cutting edge the way it used to be. Now, the picture that was painted tonight, oh God, it was so dismal. But I know that's the worst-case scenario and it's going to get better as long as we have, because many people who are working hard, not to make a name for yourself, but to do what's good for our children, for our teachers, because I'm a former teacher, AFT, local four-twenty pass vice president, and for our patrons, because it's not about you, it's about all of us again, working together and being proud of our school district. And then the third thing I wanted to tell you is this, I'm very happy that you voted for the partnership between Cool Valley and Ferguson, Florist. And the reason why is because the mayor of Cool Valley is a former teacher, Teacher of the Year from our district, Viola Murphy, longtime teacher over at, what was that school?
Comms Lane.
Comms Lane, thank you. She has worked so hard along with her constituents to try to bring this into reality. And I've sat on the edge of my seat, I didn't know what you were going to say, I was not a part of the discussion or anything, but I know she has, she had talked to me from her heart on what she wanted to happen for her community. And just this past week, her daughter's house caught on fire and she ran around the corner to her mother's home on Signal Hill and after it was all over, the house is in ruins. But VJ Murphy, the mayor, honorable mayor of Cool Valley, said she fell down on her knees and thanked God that he had awakened her, her daughter, so that she would not have died in that fire. It must have been an electrical fire in the walls, I believe. But anyway, I want to thank you for doing a good job of bringing joy to her heart, which is hurting right now because of the tragedy, or could have been a tragedy for her daughter. I hope to see you again next month. If you plan a meeting, I will be here.
Thank you.
Just make sure it's posted, okay?
Fifteen minutes are up, we'll take one more.
Okay, how are you doing tonight? My name is James Saval, I'm one of the candidates running for the board. And a good meeting tonight on discussion of all the things that are going on in the district. I listened to the teacher, I've been to your board meeting, your board meeting, and the teachers are excellent. I heard the administrative staff, they're excellent. They're doing great work in the community. Unfortunately, it doesn't get recognized because it's been overseeing about the issue of Dr. McCoy and the board considering it. I heard we talked about tonight money, missing, revenue loss in our district between housing and market crash in our county. And we're asking for residents and families to move back into our district. If you don't have a, the perception of a strong school district, which is my concern, I'm a parent in the district, I have two children, if you don't have perception of a strong school district, people don't move to your community. They just don't, families don't. So you don't gain that revenue that you're looking for. You get a different diverse of people who move in and it's not the revenue that we need and we would like to have immediately. So, I think when you look at the perception of the school district, it's all tagged around, it's the elephant in the room and another gets discussed about the issue that have happened recently about the board moving suspending it. I think it was dramatically devastating to the community, they're not all here, they're all feel it though. And I think because they don't show up here, you may feel like they don't feel it, but they do feel it. And that's part of the reason I am running. My children totally upset I, I'll share this with you, when I told them I was running for the board, one of them spoke up and said, took a couple minutes and they said, "You finna join those mean people?" And I didn't even know that was in here because we have a great home and a great spirit in our home. But it speaks of probably how many, so many other children feel the same exact way. So perception of the board is really bad behind this one decision. I think we have a great leader in our board, so I've spoken several of the principals. They like his direction. He gives that direction. I read on your site that where the superintendent's supposed to give the direction and you're supposed to follow him until a course of failure of some, to some degree, but he wasn't failing. So it's confusing to the public. It's not confusing, they understand what it is. A change needs to happen. We have diversity throughout the entire community, through your, through your principals, you're African-American, you have Latinos, you have all kinds of people throughout the district. But on the board I see one group and it's not consistent with what's going on in the district. And I'm talking about blacks, I'm not talking about other minorities, I see clearly.
So it's one group.
No, blacks are seventy-seven percent of your school district and some fifty-seven percent of your community. So I'm speaking on just our community not being, we're not here. And that hopefully that process will change the goal, but what was a big concern, that that Art McCoy been suspended and was such a great leader, it wouldn't matter what color he was, he was a great leader.
That's right.
It doesn't matter the color, he was a great leader. You throw the school district into a frenzy and perception of it is terrible right now. Yeah, we have great principals, great, great things out there, from Chris Miller, Sean at the school, a little more narcs student, hundred-and-fifteen, student, point, point oh, point, a lot of great things, but the perception by one decision is really terrible for our community. It's known throughout the entire state. Ferguson, Florist has been known as the greatest community that was prior to one time in education. It's the reason I'm living in this community now and I hope the change could happen, so that's my comment for you.
We're not happy.
And just because they're not here, don't believe, don't say they're not happy.
Thank you. Any motion? The move by Mrs. Hogshead, second by Mr. Brown to adjourn. Mr. Schub.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead.
Aye.
I vote aye. I vote aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight.